February 29th, the joint meeting between the Santa Barbara School Board and the Santa Barbara City Council. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we start with our public comment. Do we have any to this? I don't know why they handed me the slips, but there's.
Let's give those to.
You do it. Go ahead.
All right. For public comment, we have Lynn Rodriguez.
Didn't know I'd be up quite so quick. Good afternoon, members of the board, members of the city council. I'm here to address an item that I know you're going to talk a little bit about later, but I can't stay for the whole agenda, so I'm just going to make a quick comment now. And that's regarding the ongoing development and enhancement of after-school programs for kids within our community. Specifically, I'm thinking now about the junior high programs that the school district and the city are collaborating to enhance and add to. And I'm speaking both on behalf of, well, myself as a parent. I have a daughter at La Cumbre Junior High, also as a member of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, where we're working towards enhancing programs for arts and other after-school activities, and then also as a member of the Alpha Resource Center Board of Directors. What I'm specifically interested in is watching what's available for our kids after school when they get to that age, particularly if they have special needs, really starts to diminish. And I see great programs going on right now at La Cumbre. My daughter's enrolled in that after-school program. But there is a little bit of a dearth of activity, not activity, availability of programs for kids with special needs, particularly if they have no support. So I'm just really here to offer the support and encouragement of the Alpha Resource Center, of the parents of kids with special needs. Alpha is able to provide, to help provide training, to help staffing if there's a need for them to be better trained to work with kids in these kinds of programs. Sometimes the regular after-school program staff are not necessarily equipped to deal with behavioral or potentially medical issues. So this is something, I think, important to our community. And as we work towards bettering opportunities for kids with other needs, special, you know, at-risk kids, kids with learning disabilities that might currently not be enrolled in a program, I really want to see us work strongly as partners to make sure that all kids, especially in junior high, but certainly even beyond that, I think our elementary school programs are pretty well set. But so I'm offering the assistance of the Alpha Resource Center to work with you, and I'm just very encouraged that this dialogue is happening, and I'm looking forward to seeing what programs will be available on, I would hope, on all of our junior high campuses in the next year or so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Melikoff?
I didn't do the translation, the Spanish.
We do have Esperanza Villegas with us, if you'd like to have her come forward and introduce herself.
Please, yeah.
Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas, y estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes tiene preguntas, puede encontrarle en la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias.
Gracias. Headsets for hearing impaired are also available, and please indicate if you need a headset.
All right. Continuing with public comment, we have Diane Stevens, and she will be followed by Mariela Marin.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name is Diane Stevens. I own Pixel Dust Productions. I am also a Special Education Assistant over at Santa Barbara Junior High, and I had the wonderful opportunity to present a film to the Santa Barbara International Film Festival called Dawn Riders. In fact, the Oscars are over, but we still have stars here. We have Honorable Mayor Marty Bloom, we have Dr. Sarvis, and we have Ms. Nancy Rapp. They were all part of this wonderful collaboration. And we have a wonderful announcement to make. We are going to be having a public community event, which will be held on April 12th, that's Saturday, at the Marjorie Luke Theater. We are seeking some funding to put this on. It'll be a free event. We'll be working with 1235 Teen Center. The Notes for Notes will be there doing a presentation, as well as the Dawn Riders. We want to announce some good news that's going on in our neighborhood with some of the kids, and this is Carlos. He is the president of the Dawn Riders, and he has some good news as well.
I'm Carlos Soniga, and I just want to give you guys a little background of the Dawn Riders. I don't know if you guys, most of you have heard, but we are a club that build a way of art on bikes, and we, oh man, sorry.
Tell them about what you do besides building bikes.
Well, what I do besides building bikes, we invite people, young students that barely joined high school, to join us because most of those students either turn their sides to gangs, or, you know, so we try to get them before they go. And even if they're still in gangs, we try to get their attention to stay away from that and put their minds to do something creative and do work and make the community much more creative. And, yeah.
And he'll be attending the City College, and what this, this is ASB affiliated with the high school. It's one of the first clubs in California to have this type of organization. They're teaching them not only craftsman skills, but life skills to go out and be good citizens in the community. And we're asking for your support in any way you can. Money's always good, but we know people that can offer some time with skills. We're also looking for a location, so that these students will have a place to go to build bikes. Possibly, somebody here might have a bike they want to trip out. We can do that for you. And these kids work hard. I've worked with them in the trenches for a year and a half, and I saw a good story, and I'm so proud to be a part of them. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We hope to see you on the 12th. We'll keep you posted on the 12th. Glad that.
A couple weeks ago, they brought in the bikes. They are amazing, so I'm looking forward to the film.
So next is Mariela Marin, followed by David Selberg.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariela Marin. I'm Director of Counseling and Recovery Services at Pacific Pride Foundation, which is a nonprofit here in Santa Barbara, which works with the LGBT and the HIV/AIDS community, and that stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender. That was my mom's first question when I told her what I was doing. And I just, I actually just wanted to address you all, because in light of the tragic shooting of Lawrence King in Oxnard recently, I'm sure we've all heard that awful tragedy, I feel compelled, as an LGBT individual in the community, as staff at Pacific Pride Foundation, and as a community of the world, as a whole, to make sure that all of us are working towards preventing something like this from unnecessarily happening again. Each of us has a responsibility to examine our roles in the safety and comfort of our students in our schools and to take action, not just think about it. I believe and have seen fear, hate, and harassment dissipate through the simple act of getting to know one another, getting to understand one another, and getting to connect with each other. I think our responsibility lies in providing that opportunity for students. As students in grade school, junior high, and high school, we all know how difficult it is to navigate through the waters, so any assistance that we can provide, I think, is critical. Allowing students to really learn about the humanity of others and fostering a sense of fairness and inclusion is a gift that we can give. I would encourage the school district and the community as a whole to invite and implement presentations and trainings for students, teachers, and administrators. At Pacific Pride Foundation, we have been fortunate in that some teachers, some school administrators, some different areas have invited us to speak, and slowly, we've been able to begin that process of talking. We want to see that grow and get to the point where each child is touched by this message, so that they can then go forward and touch their friends, and this grows exponentially. Education and awareness needs to start early. I know we think of the LGBT community, and we think sexual orientation, that doesn't happen until you're in high school, you know? You're not allowed to date till you're in high school. Right. It has to start earlier. Children do not form their attitudes and opinions and their behaviors beginning in high school. It starts from day one. And so that's why I believe it's important that we start earlier than we've been kind of going from right now. With that being said, it's important for folks in the community to know that these sort of presentations and trainings can be made age-appropriate. I'm not saying that we go in and, you know, start teaching children from an early age something that they wouldn't need to know until they're in high school. We're talking about harassment. We're talking about bullying. We're talking about hate and violence. We are not talking about sexuality. We're talking about respecting people. I would ask that we not allow our silence to keep putting our kids in harmful situations. And we, the way I see it, is we don't expect our children to deny who they are in terms of their race, their family, their language, their religion, whatever it might be. And we need to include sexual orientation and gender expression in that. So I welcome the opportunity to see all of you at different trainings and presentations. We ask that you seek us out. We continue to seek you out. And if we make this a reciprocal, a reciprocal relationship, it'll work a lot better. So I appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
David Selberg, followed by Paul Strade.
My name is David Selberg, and I'm the Executive Director at Pacific Pride Foundation. I'll be brief. I am here today, both in remembrance and in urging. Let us remember Lawrence King, a boy who was violently murdered last week in his school computer lab by a 14-year-old classmate, Brandon. Lawrence King was just coming to terms with his sexual sexuality and identity and was being honest about it. Apparently, he didn't always dress or make himself up in a way that some people thought was appropriate for a young teenage boy. He was enduring harassment at school for these reasons, and now he is dead. Oxnard School District Superintendent Jerry Danenberg reported that the school had, quote, "offered" both Lawrence and his assailant "help." Danenberg stating that the school had been doing a lot of work with Lawrence to, quote, "help him deal with some of his concerns and his issues." Responsibility for homophobia can be placed, cannot be placed upon the LGBT students in our schools. The real issue is not the kid coming out, but the kid sitting next to him or her. Somewhere, Brandon got the message that it was okay to kill Lawrence, when Lawrence asked him to be his valentine several days before. The bigger picture here is that both children are victims, victims of a society that continues to teach that it is permissible to exclude, revile, and even hate gay people, and anyone who does not conform to the traditional gender stereotypes. As a respected colleague of mine shared with me recently, Brandon pulled the trigger, but bigotry and hatred loaded the gun, and now Brandon's life is ruined. In our Santa Barbara City and County school districts, Pacific Pride Foundation and Just Communities are invited into elementary, junior, and senior high schools to educate teachers and administrators and students about diversity, anti-bullying, and anti-harassment. We talk about how to deal with it on the playground and in the classroom. We talk about tools and skills teachers and kids can learn in creating a safe school and learning environment. In the highly-charged school environment Lawrence was attending, the lesson here is that schools cannot be passive and dismiss such learned hatred as schoolyard fights or conflict between a couple of kids with, one with issues. Schools must be proactive, and this only comes with leadership from the top down. The lives of high-risk youths such as Lawrence King are on the line, and when we wait, it is often far too late. I have received many calls and emails the last couple of weeks from moms, teachers, and a school gardener, sharing how they so often hear kids at school who are LGBT or assumed to be called fag, homo, queer, and on and on. And it doesn't just stop at name-calling. You are all powerful people in a community I grew up in. I too was one of these gay kids going to public school in Santa Barbara. I fervently ask you to make sure that all our schools have anti-bullying, anti-harassment curriculum. Don't assume that each school is implementing it voluntarily. We are invited into some schools in the community, but not all. Pacific Pride and Just Communities can knock on the principal's office door, but we cannot assure you that we will be invited in. Thank you.
It's Paul, is it Strade? Followed by Lucero Marquez.
Members of the school district and city council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you at this joint meeting. I'm Paul Strade, and I'd like to briefly outline my suggestion for a traffic improvement project at the main entrance of Santa Barbara High School at Annapamoo and Alta Vista. I've provided you all with a handout to illustrate my suggestion to add a right-hand turn lane about 100 feet long and 11 feet wide on eastbound Annapamoo for traffic turning into the campus. On the first page of the handout, the purpose is, of course, to improve the traffic flow and campus access from eastbound Annapamoo with the new turn lane. It would also widen the turn radius slightly to assist large buses that are sometimes used by tour groups and other visiting buses to the campus, and it would provide a long-term solution predicated on the space available. Under comments, there appears to be no change that would be required for street utilities, water, sprinkler main lines, buildings, or parking area, or for the electrical supply boxes. There is one tree that would need to be moved about 25 feet, and this tree probably has landmark status. On page two, this is an aerial photograph from the Public Works Department. The gray lines are the property lines. On page three, this is a line drawing of the photo on the previous page showing the existing sidewalk and parkway. On page four, this is an overlay showing the proposed turnout lane with the new sidewalk and parkway area. On page five, this is the proposed new lane as it would be if it was ever constructed. It would hold about four cars in the turn lane and another three on Q past the island. On page six, this is a view of the overall area. On page seven, the turnout lane would start about five or six feet past the tree in the immediate foreground. The curb line would be moved to the right to the inside edge of the sidewalk, and the parkway on the sidewalk would be moved onto the school property, which, of course, would require an easement. To give you a little bit of insight on the traffic flow, I spent yesterday morning, between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, counting cars. And in that 30-minute period, there were 484 vehicles that went through the intersection. Eastbound, there was 259, or 54 percent, 145 of those turned into the campus, and 114 continued on eastbound towards Milpus. On page eight, the view up a little closer, the gray box at the parkway is for communications, and that would have to be relocated about 12 feet towards the campus. On page nine, a little view further around, the four boulders in the immediate foreground would be relocated a few feet. On page 10, the boulders in the foreground, or in the back, would not have to be relocated because the project would blend into the current setup at that point. The little service box there is an irrigation valve timer section. Page 11 shows the recent work done in the last few weeks to extend the island for pedestrians out about 12 feet, and the ADA ramps that are now installed. And page 12 shows the status work on the tax dollars that work on the site. We all realize that funding for school needs and for city projects will be hard-pressed in the near future, and if there's any merit in considering this project, perhaps some grant money might fund most of the costs. Thank you again for your time and the opportunity to speak to you at this joint meeting.
And finally, in comparing to speaker slips, I think it's actually Lucero Marquez. Okay. And Ms. Marquez, did you want to speak also on item 14 later?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good morning, or good afternoon, now. My name is Lucero Marquez, and I am the coordinator for Serra Jals for Progress. I know that most of you here are familiar, but I just wanted to officially introduce myself and once again remind the community that we do have this program in our community. We are sort of new. We started in November, and we've been doing a lot of the groundwork to get this program running and start it and really serve the youth. And what our program does is to help youth achieve goals academically and also with work experience. And that's something that I've talked to a lot of you about, and some of the people in the audience as well know about, but it's, again, another program that is really focusing on youth that are facing different barriers in their communities and that are keeping them from succeeding and really achieving their goals. And I'd just like to say that we're here, and we are really looking forward to working with you. And I know that a lot of the city council members have been very key for this program to even exist and for us to have received that grant. And I want to thank you for all your work and all your support and for really being there for us. And now's the time that we can go to the next step, and again, I'm here for you, and I will be in touch with all of you, so look out. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Statement of purpose for joint meeting. Did you want to say anything?
We usually do kind of state a purpose here, but as we've been working so closely with the school board, it's become more and more obvious what we're doing here. And that is to, we realize that the kids are all our kids. We serve them, the city serves them in other ways, parks and recreation especially, but police, pal league, and so on. We all serve them in many ways. And our jobs have to do with making sure the streets are clean and safe, and that, and the school's job is to educate the children. So when we work together, it really makes a big difference for the community. So the idea here is to work together, to share, to collaborate, and to find out what each of us is doing for that goal. And so these reports that we see here, we will not be going over them, I don't think, one at a time, but they're very important, so we thank the staff who prepared them. So, Laura?
Yeah, I think as the afternoon progresses, we'll see all the things that we've worked on together, and it'll all be very clear that we're doing a lot of different things. I'm not sure how we proceed here. We're not doing, we are, number six is the update on the joint city school districts program and agreements. Is that a presentation?
We hadn't anticipated any presentations until we got to number 12. Therefore, unless there are questions on the part of city council members or board members, Board of Education members, and there may be on those items before item 12, you may want to give that a moment and ask that question.
Okay.
But after those questions are asked about those items, then we can go to number 12.
Would anyone like to? Yes.
I'm wondering whether or not we were going to have an update about the National Guard Armory and the Army Reserve. No, we're not planning on doing that at this time. All right. Just to say that there is progress on both fronts, and we'll stay tuned.
Scordaro.
I just had a really sort of simple question, I think, regarding number, item six with the after-school programs. We had some numbers for the number of students who participate, but I was wondering if we could maybe get a further breakdown in terms of gender of the students, maybe even ethnicity of the students. But I was primarily interested in the gender for these activities.
Board and council members, I'd be happy to, if you want to be a little bit more specific of which elementary, junior high, ethnicity, sports, perhaps, Annette, you and I could talk afterwards.
I was looking at AOK, the AOK program.
Yeah, as you know, the AOK program is held at all the Title I schools, and the children that are targeted for that program are the underachieving students that may not proceed to the next class. So they are specifically targeted by the school district staff to participate. But if you want to get ethnicity numbers?
Well, I was really more interested in the gender question.
Okay.
And also for a wrap.
I'd be happy to get both of those for you.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. Each time, I just always like to highlight the recycling component and that being a big piece of what the city council, the city and the school district's doing, and I see some of our environmental staff, not that you have to come up and ask any questions, but just to acknowledge that. And I know there's been some delays in terms of some equipment to go to school campuses, but that's hopefully moving forward. And just encouraging, trying to keep the good data together and seeing how both an increase in recycling at each campus also leads to a decrease in expenditures to the haulers, because recycling costs less than trash. And I know that's been monitored, and we've been following that in the subcommittee. But, and I know there's been great progress, and I'm sure, I hope to see a more detailed report about data over time, because it's been now maybe almost two years since we started the program. And in your packet, one of the, I think it's Attachment Three, has the framework that was put together by the school district, which I really think is a great guideline to look at, not just the stuff that you need to help things move, but also the training component of working with facilities maintenance staff in making this work well. So I just want to acknowledge that and acknowledge the work that continues to be done on this topic. Thanks.
Excuse me. City council board members, if I may be so bold as to interrupt, thank you for those comments about recycling. For those of you who entered the front door rather than the courtyard, if you exit the courtyard, you'll see an example of the combination recycled trash containers that the city has furnished for the school district, and the distribution of those is almost complete. And so, thank you.
Just to add a little bit there, I was at Harding School this morning in a third-grade classroom, and they were very proud to point to their new blue containers with the little trash container, and they said, "And we're going to get food scraps soon." So they're going to be recycling their food scraps. So the kids are on to this. They know. And I'm glad that the school district has jumped on to this, too. It's good.
Ms. Parker.
I wanted to ask a quick question about the Integrated Pest Management Program. The advisory committee list that is on there looks dated.
It is dated. That's my error. I did not update that.
And I wasn't sure if they are still meeting quarterly?
We have not met quarterly. We had a trouble getting a quorum. We have a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday at 3:30, and that list should have Paul Turnbull instead of Jan Zettel and Lane Wheeler instead of Linda Mitchell.
Gotcha. I was also curious, for a future meeting at some point, to hear sort of more about what the city is doing on their properties that are, we have some schools that are, Adams is right on the city golf course, and Santa Barbara Junior High is right on Ortega Park. It would be great to get information about what the city is doing in relationship to properties that are right next to our schools.
We could do that.
Ms. House.
Thank you very much. Looking at item eight, as we are doing here, there's the three different areas that are covered here, the IPM Integrated Pest Management Program, the Recycling and Waste Reduction and Water Conservation, and an awful lot has been accomplished in all three of those. My question goes not just for today, but possibly for a future meeting with AB32, which deals with climate change coming from Sacramento, and really having a, not just a request, virtually a demand, that jurisdictions throughout the state consider global warming in their future plans and general plans, and everything from building standards all the way down. I know that the city's been working, even prior to that, on energy consumption and our building standards in the city, inventory and greenhouse gas emissions, those kinds of things, for lots of reasons, and they tie right in with this. It seems like it's an area where we could be sharing knowledge and working together. Maybe we're doing a lot of things that are exactly the same, maybe not. Maybe we could be learning from one another, and it would seem like a next step, perhaps, in our collaboration in this area of sustainability. So, more a comment than a question, but something perhaps we can look forward to in a future agenda and have our staffs begin to collaborate in that area.
Well, I want to have one question also. On the safe routes to school, I'm very excited by this. I hadn't heard about the Jake Bozell multipurpose pathway, and I was wondering if
And I was wondering if that, if there's anything else to be said about it, whether there's something else. I was wondering whether it's going to connect in some ways, it should help the junior high, it's right there. I don't know if the person who's in charge of that is here or somebody I could ask a question of.
We have Paul Casey here.
Paul Casey, our new Public Works interim director.
I'll do my best to answer any questions.
That's wonderful. It's a bike trail, is that correct?
It's a bike trail kind of right there on the corner.
And will it connect with the bike trail, is there any way to connect it with the bike trail that's on the other side of the, near Modoc over there, that larger bike trail? I don't know. I just thought, wanted to put that in there.
Yeah, we'll try to look at the connectivity. I think the specific physical project is going to make just that intersection work better, but yeah, we're always looking to try to get those connections made.
And that'll help kids who are going to Lockalina.
Exactly.
That's terrific.
I have a little more information to add to that too, if you would. The organization COSS, Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, I serve on their board, has a program that may soon be renamed because of a conflict of the name with another publication. It's called Walk Santa Barbara and there's a book published under that name, it turns out, we now know. But it's achieved around a $50,000 grant and there may be some other funds coming to really address these issues of improving, it's not within the Safe Roots to School Program, but it is a complimentary program. They began their efforts in Montecito, Montecito Union School, access to the school. And it is privately funded, but they are expanding to be a broader program throughout the entire area in the city of Santa Barbara. So I think there are going to be opportunities to collaborate with the school district on that as well from a nonprofit side.
I just thought, well, we had you up here, I'd ask you my question too. Under Safe Roots to School as well, there's an item that talks about a pedestrian corridor that would connect Santa Barbara Junior High with Santa Barbara High School. And I was just wondering if you could describe what that is? It talks about a traffic calming project?
Those are the constructions that are pretty much done almost now. They're the bulb out extensions, so it's just making the pedestrian crossings of the street safer. It's not a separate dedicated pedestrian facility, but those are almost done. I think the Cannon-Pernodone has a couple more weeks to go.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
I'd just like to ask the status on the, it indicates here that there is some movement going forward on AB 321, the reduction of speed in school zones. And where do we stand on that really? I'm sorry, Mr. Casey, to make you come back up here again, but I had had a real interest and we have constituents that have shown interest in this. How's that going?
We've got great interest as well. We're moving towards doing the speed surveys and the work that we have to do before going ahead and doing it. It might be some different circumstances around different schools, but we are pursuing it and hope to implement it where we can. We're waiting for Caltrans to kind of give us some direction, we've got that. So we're moving forward now with implementing it.
And you think it'll be in the near future or a year from now?
Yes, near future. We need to come to council, still see an item at council in the next month or two that you adopt the resolution that then allows us to go and do that.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Dr. Noel.
I'd like to put in a word for another meaning of Safe Route to Schools, broadening of the meaning. There's a program, you can look it up on the website of the California Council of Community Relations, it's called the Safe Passage Program. And it has to do with organizing neighborhoods to provide safe passage with respect to gangs and youth violence. And they have facilitators who come out and help you put the program together and so on. And I found it very interesting, I would refer all of you to it, Safe Passages.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to 12, which is a report on the status of the school board's direction with respect to the Hidden Valley property.
Good, we gave you a written report on the update of the status of the Hidden Valley property. Since we just had a board meeting and discussion about this Tuesday night, we'd like to give you a verbal review of the board's direction and discussion and give you a further update on our plans for next steps. To do that, we have Dave Hatjunk, who's our Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Dave has spearheaded, well, Dave's responsible for our properties.
Thank you, Dr. Saris, board members, city council members. As most of you, I'm sure, are all aware, Hidden Valley in approximately 12 and a half acre site, currently zoned at five houses per acre. What you may not realize is that while the school district does not pay property tax, the school district does pay an unused site fee to the state of California every year. Last year, that was a $40,000 payment for having a site that's unused. Well, about four years ago, the board authorized a district advisory committee to initiate a study of options for our properties. That, let me back up a little bit, say a little more, that study was completed, then a feasibility study was completed by UNIDev. Since that time, our board has asked for additional information. Our real estate consultants and land use consultants have provided the board with additional information. And then at a meeting on December 4th, the board discussed our properties and in general what their feelings were on the properties. Should the properties, develop the properties for housing versus outright sale, lease or exchange? Should a priority be seeking general fund revenue versus capital revenue? If properties are sold, the district can only use those proceeds for capital improvements. If rents or lease income is coming in, that goes to the general fund, which can be used for any purpose, including capital improvements, but that gives our school board a little more flexibility. Would you emphasize staff housing or revenue generation if you had a project? And the board members indicated they wanted to retain title to the land and maximize the financial return. They didn't want to just sell the property. Rather than read things to you just briefly, things that our board has considered, developments, priorities. At the top right, if we, a developer would refine parameters, submit a project if that's what eventually happened, specifics of a project, these are all considerations that the board had. At a meeting on December 4th, the board kind of narrowed down with discussion, I want to let everybody know that our board has not taken a vote or authorized any use of this land, that they have not voted to do anything with the land. All they've done so far is studied and asked questions and receive a lot of information. But some of the board comments after the December 4th meeting were that the board would prefer a lease or exchange, not an outright sale, that the board would prefer that because they would like general fund revenue, which gives them maximum flexibility in deciding how to spend those dollars in our tight budget times. And they also discussed that Hidden Valley would be more appropriate for market rate housing on leased land and including affordable units as required by law to keep more in concept with current zoning and what's currently in the neighborhood. On February 26th, we gave an update to the board with a suggestion that the board directs staff to develop a RFP or RFQ for developers so we know what the developers would think the use and viability of these properties are and what value that would be to the district. No one's come forward and said with any concrete definition or plan, this is what the properties were worth, this is what they'll be worth after entitlements, this is what we think is feasible, this is what we think is not feasible. And the only way for our board to find out what is really feasible, not feasible, and if it's even something they like, is to ask for, request for proposals or request for qualifications. The request, we just received this direction three days ago at our Tuesday nights meeting. The board asked that we develop this for both the Hidden Valley and Tatum properties based on a ground lease scenario, not selling the property. Developers or anyone could submit proposals on one or both properties. And we want to make sure in the RFP RFQ that developers know the district does not have any funds right now, it does not have a funding source to go forward to go through the process of gaining entitlements on these properties, that they would need to bear the full cost of that. And we also want to make sure that at points, at some point along the way, that the board was able to stop, look and decide now that if they did have entitlements on the property, would they proceed with those entitlements or would they look to exchange the property for another piece of property and sell that property with entitlements? Again, this is all conceptual, the board has not made any concrete decisions. And so the next steps that we're directed to take were to prepare an RFP RFQ in conjunction with our land use consultant and district staff and then bring that RFP RFQ back to the board for their review. And of course, once the board approved that RFP RFQ, we would publish it and take steps from there based on direction from the board. So anything short of the fact that the board has directed us to prepare an RFP RFQ, nothing beyond that has been decided or, to my knowledge, no movement is taking place towards any one direction. But I think the board made it clear that they thought that leasing the land was preferable to sale, that general fund revenue was preferable to capital revenue. And again, it's $40,000 a year just to have the property sitting vacant. And so I'll keep my comments brief, if there's any questions, I'll attempt to answer them.
Since your February 26th board meeting, there have been some rumors circulating in the community that you essentially put out to private developers how much would you want for it. Where could the confusion be coming from in that?
My next step is to set a meeting with staff and our land use consultant, and I haven't even set the meeting yet. So I'd say those are just that, rumors. In fact, in the last three days, district staff has not taken any action or had time to move on this yet. We've had other priorities to deal with.
Thank you for clarifying that. The, just the other issue that I wanted to bring up in that is on one of your slides, which is the non-use fee paid to the state. One of the things I, I think that it would be both in the city's interest and in the school district's interest while this property remains in some sort of limbo is to try to remove that as a cost to the district. And if anything, to be able to gain some revenue off of the property. Because of the joint school district, city council meetings, I have been approached by, for instance, Fairview Gardens, who was interested in doing a educational ag project there that would essentially, first of all, because if they made it educational, it was something that schools participated in, you would no longer have to pay the state back. And they would also be interested in providing revenue to the school district for use. So if that's something that, I just wanted to put that out there because that is something that Fairview Gardens has been attempting to communicate with the school district on and I don't know if there's any feelings that board members have about that, but my thought was, one thing that I could do that would be constructive is to try to remove it as a weight around the neck of the school district, a financial weight around the neck of the school district.
We can contact Fairview Gardens, we'd also need to contact our legal counsel because there's a lot of steps the district has to go to under the education code before it can lease property. We just can't offer it to somebody.
Mr. Hatjunk, I'm a little confused because I attended that meeting and I read the report about the, going out to the developers with an RFP. And I read the recommendation and I was just checking my memory and I can see how it would be concluded that, that, no, I guess I can't see how it would be concluded that the board directed movement to go ahead on developing the RFP. And the reason is because I recall asking explicitly how much it was going to cost to do that because consultants were involved. And my recollection is that the answer was that we would get that information back. And of course, that would make a lot, a big difference to me given our financial plight, whether I, about the timing of going ahead with developing an RFP. So my interpretation, I guess, is a little different than yours as to whether the board directed any, we didn't vote.
Correct.
To direct the preparation of an RFP. And since that's a costly endeavor, I thought, at least in my mind, I was waiting to hear what it was going to cost and where the money was going to come from.
Well, before any RFP was developed or costs were incurred, we'd have to come back to the board with a proposal for those costs. In addition, we're preparing the costs you asked for for the next board brief. So the plan is to prepare those costs for the next board brief, to have a meeting with staff and our land use consultant, to find out what the estimate is for those costs of developing the RFP RFQ and then coming back to the board with that information. It's true, the board has taken, like I said before, the board has not made a decision, has not taken a vote, but the general consensus was that we would do two things. We would get back to you with the past costs and we would come back with you of what it would cost to do an RFP RFQ. And the general talk of the board was that we wanted staff to work towards developing that. These were, these were some of the parameters set by the board. Before we go off and run and spend money, come back to the board and tell us what it's cost in the past and what it would cost in the future.
Yeah, I guess my problem is I don't think public agencies work on the basis of a general consensus. I thought they worked on the basis of a vote.
Well, there would be a vote on the cost.
And I grant you, I grant you that the sentiments expressed by individual board members could easily be interpreted as a consensus, I grant you that.
Yes.
But there's still a difference between your reading of a consensus and using the term, the corporate entity, the board, has made a direction. And I'm just, Dr. Saris and I've had this dialogue.
But before an RFP RFQ could even start to be developed, the board would have to approve the contract for the consultant. Correct.
I just wanted to make my views known.
Madam President.
Ms. Snyder, welcome.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions that don't need to be answered now, but there are a couple of things that have occurred to me just as gaps in my information. You may very well have gone over this at your board. And it has to do with the, with the similarities and which type of entity, a sale or a lease, does an exchange fall under? And do entitlements received for this property at some point in the future maybe, and there were an exchange, do those entitlements transfer to the exchanged property? Now, I, we know a lot more about how it works in our world, but you have constraints and considerations and legal considerations that we don't have because of your being an educational facility in a school district. So if you can answer those now in a simple way?
Sure, I can try and answer that. Legal counsel for the district is not here, but an exchange of a property for a property of equal value is not considered a sale. Per the education code, we have leeway to exchange properties. As far as any development rights from one property to another, that would be based on the city, the county, whatever agency had jurisdiction over their property, separate from the education code.
So entitlements received for a property like this, exchanged for something in another jurisdiction, those entitlements wouldn't just out of hand, you know, matter of fact, be transferred to the new property? There would have to be a whole process involved again?
In other words, the entitlements would increase the value of the property and increase the value of the property if it were exchanged for another property.
Right. Now, the exchange, because it's not considered a sale, does that allow you to put the money? Should you get money ultimately into the general fund or is it restricted at that point? Since it's not, exchange is not considered as a?
I don't know if there would be money changing hands if there were an exchange, if a property was founded equal.
No, there would not, but the property that it is exchanged for would have some sort of development that I would inure to the benefit of the school district, I would assume. And so I'm wondering the proceeds from that, whether or not you are restricted there or not?
It would, if there were some proceeds, I have to refer that to legal counsel. It would, it would, if there were some proceeds, I have to refer that to legal counsel. But I do know that if it was, if it was land for land.
But it's the, it's what happens after that.
Yeah, right, right. It also could be land for a building that's existing, that has tenants, that produces income, that gives a revenue stream to the district.
Right.
There's a multitude of possibilities.
It's just a string of questions that, you know, I think needs just clarification, if not for us, but certainly.
I wouldn't want to go too far without legal counsel.
I wouldn't either. And I'm not, I'm not going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In, in just in the same vein, I know the county has been working very hard with Santa Barbara Ranch properties up there in Naples and building a transfer of development rights program, which I talked with a staff member the other day, and it's, it's getting close to being brought before the Board of Supervisors for the South Coast, not just for the whole county, but it would be for the South Coast region. And there would be a bank established that would hold the value of those rights, and it helps for the exchange, not just kind for kind. So if, I don't know if you've had a chance to interact at all with, with county staff, but it might be one of, an avenue to, to know about that at all as you move forward in this. They've been, that's, that was originally specific to that property, but it's been designed in such a way that it could be generalized or used outside of just that one exchange.
Thank you.
Are you aware of that or were you?
I was aware of it. I didn't know it was about to come.
Well, it's getting, it's getting closer. It hasn't been approved by the Board of Supervisors. And Mr. Williams has been following this too. I know we're both very interested to see if there's some opportunities in this. And anyway, something to keep tabs on.
Thank you. And I would be neglectful if I didn't mention also, city staff, district staff, and members of city council and members of the school board have met on looking at possibilities of what could happen at Hidden Valley as far as an exchange or best use. And there were a few meetings on that subject too.
Mr. Williams?
That, that would be my, my, I guess, the question that I would do one more follow-up on is Mr. Hatt Young's. Last point is just that it, it seemed to me that, at least in the last meeting of the Joint Land Use Subcommittee between the city council and, and school district board, that there was a possibility that sort of emerged as, as having greater likelihood than others, which was the, the question of if an exchange could not be made in totality, but an exchange of partial development rights to reduce what happens at Hidden Valley or, or to do some other arrangement, seemed to emerge as a real, as a much more concrete of a possibility, a possibility that seemed to have more of a mutual interest between the school district and, and the city council. And it would be, I would, I would hate to see this go a whole lot farther without that subcommittee meeting again and examining that deeper. So I, I do hope that we will schedule one of those sometime in the next six months. I think that would be.
Maybe I should address that. Board members have expressed interest in an exchange. If the city council wants to develop a proposal and, and propose that, that we exchange two acres in Hidden Valley for an acre here, for example, gosh, come to us with that. We can't do that in subcommittee. You would have to do that as a city council. The, the board will be moving ahead, developing an RFP with the idea of developing the options in, in conjunction with the developer so that we could get to the point of entitlements and value on the property or being able to exchange the property, understanding what the entitlements and value of the property is. Now, that can take a while, but I frankly don't see, well, I don't see returning to a subcommittee because I don't see how we can move ahead in that process.
Dr. Malikoff, the one, I guess the one problem I would have with that, Dr. Sarvis, is that it is, without the subcommittee discussion, is it very difficult to know what is in the board's interest. I might be able to know what is in the city council's interest, maybe. But knowing what is in the board's interest is very difficult without that subcommittee discussion. We could come up with a deluxe exchange package that sounds great to, to us, and we think is exactly what is in the school district's interest. And you're like, not interested. And so the question is, we would need, in order to formulate that, we would need a better idea of what is in the school district's interest. Because when I talk to you, it seems to me that revenue is mostly in the interest. When I talk to other board members, a downtown school or, you know, you know, housing or other things may also be in the interest. Or housing to produce revenue might be in the highest interest. I don't know what's in the highest interest of the, of the school district, so it's hard for me to create a proposal that would be in your highest interest without that dialogue.
We tried to capture that in the written summary. The primary interest appears to be in a revenue stream for the district. As you know, because of our previous discussions and the feasibility study, the Hidden Valley property may be worth some fifty million dollars to the school district. Because of its location, because of the neighborhood, there does not appear to be much interest in, in a workforce housing project on that property. It appears to be more conducive to market rate development. Discussions so far have been to stay with, with densities called for by current zoning, that if there's any affordability component, that affordability component would be whatever is demanded by local code. So the preference has been toward a revenue stream.
And I mean, in that case, I would, I would, I would, I would work on such a thing. But I, I do also, this is why when I heard, you know, when, when rumors circulated around Hidden Valley that you guys were, you know, putting it out to bid essentially this week, at first I was alarmed. But the second point, I was like, well, maybe they'll realize it's not worth fifty million dollars if they put it out to bid. So I, I do think that I could come up with a proposal. There's no way it is physically possible for that to be a fifty million dollar proposal. And so maybe part of that would be to, that something that, that we both need to do is get a better idea of what that revenue stream realistically could produce in order to make such a means of exchange possible.
And our difficulty, and other board members may want to jump in, our difficulty with that is that we don't really know what that is worth until we have worked through the process, until we have the entitlements, until we have, you know, essentially the, the city on board with, with what we might be able to do with that property. And at that point, then we would have a decision to make, which is whether we go ahead and develop that property, whether it's, it is in fact worth enough to do that, whether we exchange that property for other property, hopefully income-producing property. But we wouldn't know until we're farther down the road, the answer to that question.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. I, I think there can be some things that can work concurrently here. You obviously have a process about what to do with this property. And obviously, the city's going to have to be involved in that because if it's a housing project, that comes under the city purview. But at the same time, there is, we've always, three, four meetings now have expressed some form of interest in some way of what if there was a land swap type of capability? And to be honest, as a member of the council who's not on the subcommittee that was put together, I would feel very uncomfortable moving forward with any kind of proposal without hearing a recommendation from the subcommittee first because it had representation of both the school district and the city council members and staff from both entities. So I understand, and I think it's important, as Mr. Williams was saying, during this bidding process, to see what the value of the land is. So in order for us to figure out what we're talking about in terms of value of any land swap, two acres to one acre, I don't know if that's the right number or not, and we won't know until we have that analysis done. But let's not just finish one analysis and then decide, well, do we really want to go into this other option? Why can't we just do that on a concurrent basis? Just to have all the options on the table with the information that we need in front of us? Because it may be that all the things you mentioned here, revenue, revenue stream, of course, for some form of leased housing, if that's your highest priority, but not necessarily all of it has to be at that spot right there. And if the way we could use some mechanism to create other sources of revenue stream, but it may be in different locations, and then keep some open space in that area, would be very important. So my, that would be my perspective coming from, I mean, Mr. Williams can give me all the proposals he wants, but he's one of seven council members and zero five school board district members. So it'd be hard for me to analyze really that in, in good faith. So I, I would really echo the importance of keeping these things running concurrently.
I, I would too, but I guess I'm, because I'm struggling in my mind with the four million dollars we have to cut from the school budget. I, I keep hearing a planning process to get to a decision that has a big price tag on it, but I can't, I don't know how much. And, and I'm, I'm so preoccupied with how are we going to keep our programs in place? And had a call the other day about, we're talking five, ten thousand dollar savings that might make the difference in a program or not. And so when I think of consulting fees and, and the process to, to move this forward, I, I want to, I just, I want to know the price of it. Because it's, will come out of, if it comes out of the general fund, it will impact teaching and academic programs. It's just, we're in that kind of a bind. So that's where I am on this. And I, I, I understand, I'm not privy to the, to that committee's work. I would like to know about the committee's work.
And just to be clear, it would come out of the general fund. It would come out of the unrestricted general fund, the same one we use to pay for programs.
See, and that's where I, and I read, you know, that you've made a freeze on spending in the general fund, and then this seems to be an exception. And, and I, I need to know where we are in terms of the impact on programs. The call was about the Gifted and Talented Education Program. The, the district contributes only ten thousand dollars a year to it. And apparently, the rumors are that that's on a possible cut list. That, there's some people in this community who really care about that. And, and if we go ahead and spend ten thousand on consultants to, to, I understand we're spending money that's going to make money. I understand that. But that may be a luxury in, in the present budget situation when we're facing the, really, the elimination of whole programs.
Mr. Williams?
If we have, oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I was, I was just trying, that, that's always been an important point because I, I always thought that one of the only reasons why it would be more attractive to do a land swap with the city is to save the school district the initial costs of trying to develop a proposal and the initial loss of funds and the initial loss of attention from your core mission. And so to me, the idea that, that, that the city could make an offer that would have value, either immediate or delayed value to the school district instead of a, a long development, you know, process that can cost a lot of money. I mean, go out and ask Mark Lee how long it can take and how much money it can take. And, 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 you know, you start to wonder sometimes whether it would be good to have begun that journey. And so that's what, with the logic of, let's figure out what the, you know, what kind of development we could do there, and then look at exchange, to me defeats part of the incentive to exchange, which is to ensure that you could avoid having to put out those costs in the first place.
You know, the difficulty on an exchange is not knowing what the value of the property is. And that was the intention in moving forward with the RFP. However, if there's confusion on the part of my board, then we'll take it back to the board, and we'll clear that up.
Ms. Cordero?
Well, I'm going to agree with Dr. Sarvis. I think part of the confusion for the board is I don't think we have specifically set our priorities. We haven't said our number one priority is revenue stream. Our number two priority is workforce, workforce housing. Our number three priority is, I don't know what, open space. We, we haven't said that. We kind of operate on the assumption that we sort of agree on what we think our priorities are. And so I think that's causing some confusion for, at least it's causing confusion for me in terms of what kind of a, of a exchange I might be interested in, at what point in the process I would want that to happen, et cetera. Because if we have as a, as a priority that we want to eliminate as many of those upfront costs as possible, then that would, that would certainly move the possibility of an exchange up further. If we have as a priority that we really want to maximize our return, you know, to the most we can, then we probably need to know some of these other values before we make a decision. So I think, at least for me, part of my difficulty with this issue is that as a board, we haven't fully determined what it is that we agree on for our priorities. I think each of us has maybe identified our own, I'm not even sure we have. And we've kind of had some, you know, insinuation of what we think we might agree on, but we've never formally adopted anything like that.
On that note of confusion, I think is, we'll, we might want to go on. Maybe we do need to, I mean, we certainly as a board need to come back and discuss this more and figure out, we're sort of headed in one direction, but it seems like we could be going in another direction at the same time. So on that note, we'll go to the second matter on our agenda. The presentation on the district's fiscal matters.
Well, in the absence of having a permanent CBO here in the district, I'd like to give this presentation myself. Council members have asked for an update on our fiscal issues here in the district. And in doing so, to answer the question, whatever happened to the five million dollar surplus? Our budget figures at the end of June two thousand eight showed an erroneous surplus of five million dollars. We immediately went, went to work to find out why, and we took a number of actions and caused a number of changes. Just by way of example, I called the county education office to ask for their assistance immediately. We launched an internal review. We brought in a consultant from an auditing firm. The errors in the end were errors in overstated revenue and understated expenses. And it is amazing how quickly that adds up to five million dollars. Significantly, the errors made it look as if the budget cuts that we had made, and they were painful budget cuts, over two million dollars in April had been unnecessary. And that was a significant problem for us. In my determination to fix the problem, we made a number of changes. We replaced our director of fiscal services. We moved a number of people out of the district. And thanks largely to the efforts of our new director of fiscal services, Shirley Corpus, she's sitting back in the corner by Rob next to the door. By the end of the summer, we had reliable, timely, and accurate budget numbers. And we continue to have reliable, timely, and accurate budget numbers. We also brought in an interim CBO of the highest caliper, caliber, not a caliper, Eric Smith. And Eric has had considerable experience in working with districts with more, more severe financial problems than our own. The new budget numbers were confirmed by our interim CBO, Eric Smith, in December. Now, in December, in taking a look at those numbers, our multi-year projections showed that the current balance, the balance for the current school year, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, was not five million dollars, but was a much more modest two million dollars. So that's where we were in December at two million dollars. But because we are in deficit spending, that two million dollar surplus, and this is two million dollars over and above the minimum three percent reserve that we carry on a regular basis, that million, the two million dollar surplus by next year would be reduced to just half a million dollars. And because of our spending, that would be reduced so that we're in the negative the third year out. Therefore, we started to build a recovery plan. We also brought in an independent firm for school fiscal services, School Services of California. California, a highly respected firm, to review all of our fiscal functions, our practices, to advise us on how best to structure our fiscal services department for maximum efficiency, what training we needed, use of our business system, the number of people we needed with which responsibilities. And the numbers were again confirmed by this independent organization, School Services of California, but we asked School Services of California to do something else. We asked them to conduct an independent calculation of the multi-year budget, and now there was a change in the landscape. By January of this year, we had a proposal from the governor, a new education proposal for the governor, and it was a dire budget proposal for education from the governor. Now, today, it looks as if our current year budget will not be affected. It's still fine. It's still healthy. We will probably not have any mid-year cuts, as was proposed by the governor's budget on January 10th. But in order to make our minimum 3% reserve in the next year's budget, we need to plan to make $4 million in cuts. And $4 million in cuts in a budget of $128 million is a significant amount. In fact, that's the overall budget. The unrestricted budget where this $4 million has to come out of is much closer to $93 million, and that's, again, a significant amount. These are decisions that will have to be made this spring in preparation for next year's budget. Let me tell you what we've done so far and what we plan to do, because we talk about this every other Tuesday night when we get together. Knowing that any money we save in this year's budget will help towards next year's budget, we took the following immediate actions. We immediately froze spending. We froze hiring, and we froze travel and conference expenditures. Now, anytime we have 35 students in a class and we need a teacher in that class, we will bring someone into that classroom. But there are positions that we may not hire or that we may simply postpone in hiring as they become vacant. I told the board last Tuesday that we would not be replacing the assistant superintendent for secondary education. You may have heard that Paul Turnbull, who's sitting behind me, has been invited to go to Santa Inez as their superintendent. Santa Inez is a basic aid district. Santa Inez is one of those districts that is essentially immune to any state budget crisis. Congratulations, Paul.
Thanks so much.
I also asked the board Tuesday night to cut another two and a half certificated administrative positions. I believed it was important to lead our cuts with a reduction to administrative positions. Now, the board will have to prepare for sweeping budget cuts. Last spring, we were able to keep those cuts away from the classroom. Last spring, the board had enough options that it was able to keep programs, in fact, programs that many other districts do not have. Just as an example, we received state funding for ninth grade class size reduction. So instead of 35 students in an English or math class, we're able to bring those down to 20 and 22 students. That state funding does not fully cover the cost of ninth grade class size reduction. In our district, the cost is an additional $570,000. The board considered that cut last year, and the board had enough latitude that they did not have to impose that. We kept the program last year. Few other school districts have ninth grade class size reduction. In fact, this has not been suggested, but there are a number of districts who dropped kindergarten through, through third grade class size reduction and did it years ago. We believe it's still, the state funding still provides enough funding so that it pays for itself, but of course, we'll be looking at that as well. We would not be anxious to change K through three class size reduction. The cuts made last year were agonizing. They were painful, but they were relatively easy compared to what we are facing this year. It will not be easy to prepare for the worst, $4 million in cuts to next year's budget. Over 85% of our expenditures go to personnel. They go to salaries and benefits. We are a people-rich institution. Almost everything we deliver, we deliver through people. We can turn the lights off, be more diligent about that, but that will not get us to $4 million. So there are other cuts. In fact, in bringing Eric Smith in and looking at things like insurance rates and in charges in other programs and deficits to categorical and unrestricted, Eric Smith has already brought some $700,000 to the table. He's already earned his keep. The biggest problem, oh, let me talk about what we're trying to do to mitigate that as well. When we look at these cuts, we expect that for this go-around, we will have to make cuts in administrative positions, in certificated positions, and in classified positions, as well as other places in the district. We're looking to mitigate the effect by offering a retirement incentive. In the past two years, let me just explain that, and in fact, this is a great example. In the past two years, we've had about 12 or 14 certificated retirements. Certificated employees are those who are teachers, counselors, librarians, psychologists. The last time we offered a retirement incentive, which was about four years ago, we had 68 retirements. Well, at 68, a retirement incentive, even though it would cost us money, would pay for itself. And we cannot offer an incentive unless we can qualify for it and unless we can show that it actually is a savings in expenditures. My guess is that this will go through, and we have a lot of people, almost a third of our certificated employees, who would qualify for this incentive. I shouldn't speculate on numbers, so I won't give you raw numbers on this. But compared to sending out layoff notices, which is very upsetting to, to our people, our talented staff, if we can mitigate that with people who would find it to their advantage to retire, then we will. Our biggest problem, and the most frustrating problem, is that we have to make all of these decisions now. We took immediate steps about this year's budget. We will send out layoff notices as we were required to do by law in March, and we will finalize our decisions about programs and cuts in our budgets in April. And all of that is prior to the governor's May revision of the state budget. And that, of course, is only the next step toward finalization of the state budget. The state goes, the state legislature goes to work at that point, and we won't see until the middle of the summer how this all ends. In fact, not only the middle of the summer, and we have seen years when that didn't happen until August, until September. We saw one year not too many years ago when it happened in October. Now, when the state, when, when the board makes its decisions about cuts this spring, they will be sequencing those cuts so that they can trigger bringing back programs. Although, wouldn't it be sad if we started the new school year, then decided we could bring back some programs in October? So of course, we're looking for a quick resolution to the, the state problem. A month ago, I solicited ideas about how to save money to reduce expenses, and we have received suggestions from staff, parents, board members. I welcome city council members to send in their suggestions. You can send me an email. You can write it anonymously. I don't care, but we're looking for suggestions, and it's time to put those ideas on the table so that we can cost out those ideas and make some decisions about them further down the line. So, that's what happened to our $5 million surplus. It never was, and our, our budget situation looks much more dire now, just eight months later. Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody want to make any comments?
Madam President. Dr. Sarvas, I don't, and members of your board, I don't envy your position here at all. It's, I'm saddened, I have to say. I'm really very saddened to, to hear that the situation is, is as bleak as it is, but being one that works at the state level quite a lot with the League of California Cities, it's not like it's a surprise to me in that, you know, we're very familiar with the governor's proposed budget and some of the assembly and Senate revisions that are going to take place to that. The thing that concerns me the most is when you say that the retirements and the incentive package and, and all of that, and that's all well and good. Retirements sound great. But what people need to realize is that, at that point, those positions remain vacant. It's not as though you're going to refill and backfill those retirements. Those positions, while they remain, they remain unoccupied, and therefore, the services are not rendered. I assume that's the way it works with you. That's the way it works with us.
Exactly so. It means fewer positions in the long run.
Right. Although they remain on the books, and they could be filled at a later date. The problem is, though, when you realize that, is that you're, you're talking about counselors and other certified positions, and that's where you get into the programs that we so desperately want for our kids, you know, the music, the art, the sports, all the after-school programs that we're talking about. Our next subject matter is going to be, what are we all doing together to address the issue of gang violence in our community as a whole, in our region? And a lot of these programs and a lot of these positions go directly to that exact outreach to the kids and services to the kids. So it is very painful to hear only about cuts, and I was glad to see that in your presentation to us, in your information to us, you did set out some opportunity, some ways to, to increase funding, as opposed to just looking at cuts, cuts, cuts. How do you bring in more money? And in our previous discussion, it was all about, how do you bring in more money? And what do you do with the properties that are lying fallow and not only just costing you money, but, but they're not producing a revenue stream? And I see here, securing a substantial revenue stream from district properties as a whole, not just the two that were mentioned in the last subject matter, is, is of critical importance because this actually trickles down to our most precious resource, and that is our, our children, our next, our next generation. Another opportunity that popped out at me was exploring the possibility of a parcel tax. Now, I'm not quite sure what you have in mind there, but that's very intriguing. People don't like to pay tax, but, and I'm not quite sure how that would work. Maybe not at this time because we need to move on, but maybe we could get a little more information about what that would mean, unless you have a really short explanation. And the last one is the potential lease of district facilities. Now, I see that as being able to fit hand in hand, maybe, with some of the things that we're going to hear about in our next topic of discussion, and that has to do with, how do we do more programming for the youth and keep them out of the trouble that, you know, folks can get into if they have, you know, nothing else productive, including some of the, the skilled training. And I know that there was a conversation about a year ago that had to do with a vocational school that, that didn't work for, for a variety of reasons, but I think that the subject matter, that the, that the concept of that vocational training in a whole lot of areas for a whole lot of folks is exactly something we need to focus on, and I'm sure we'll talk about that a little bit more in our next subject. But, but getting the district more funds in order to not cut so many programs is fundamentally important to this community at large and as a whole. So I certainly stand ready to help in any way.
Two quick comments. Thank you so much, and thank you for underscoring the need for revenue stream. The other comment, that was pretty quick, wasn't it? The other comment is that since you did mention that we were looking at a parcel tax, let me briefly tell you where we are in that process. We have not decided to go to a parcel tax. We haven't put it on any, any ballot. We are, however, hearing a presentation from a polling firm. We've met with a number of polling firms, and we'll hear a presentation from them, and the board will decide based on that presentation whether they'd like to go ahead and, as you know, spend money on a polling firm to find out the feasibility of a parcel tax in this community.
Well, I'm only one of seven, and just because one of us enunciates something, don't ever think that it speaks for the seven of us until we also take a vote. But I don't think that a parcel tax is something that people should be too squeamish about because of what it's going to go for. I think it deserves, I think it deserves exploration. I think it deserves significant investigation, and if it goes to create revenue for our most important resource, I can't imagine that people would be too terribly squeamish about it, but I'd sure like to see them try, you know?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Well, I, I remember the moment that this all began, which was in, in the late 90s, which I was, I was working for legislature, and I remember it was our own senator, who's now our own senator, who got up and talked about why we needed a vehicle license fee given back to the taxpayers. And if you look consistently at, at the, at the deficit of the state and the figures produced by the vehicle license fee, they're strangely familiar. They're strangely similar. And so to me, this is just a product of a total abdication of responsibility to our, our future, to sort of, you know, for the, to jump on the tax-cutting bandwagon in the short term at a state level. And it's, and it's really sad, you know, because it's, it's, it's both a contributor towards, towards the problems and social malaise that we have that we're going to talk about next, but it's also an erosion of our greatest source of strength as a society. You know, Mayor Bloom was there Monday morning when, when Dr. Farzane Zacharrias, I think his name is, Newsweek columnist on the economy, spoke to a crowd in Santa Barbara. Not exactly a liberal kind of guy, but he said the, you know, that really the only competitive edge we have in a global economy left is our educational infrastructure. And if we abandon that, to me, that's a, a sign fundamentally of the eclipse of American power. And I think that's something that we need to challenge our citizens on, is that really the road that we want to go down? And if state officials don't have the courage to challenge the state's citizens on that, we should have the courage to challenge our own citizens on that. And so I, to me, I want to express my personal support for any efforts to increase revenue to avert, to me, the really, the disaster, and, you know, to me, the, the school district shouldn't be in the, the business of developing property as a desperate, you know, countermeasure towards something that fundamentally is, is driven by politicians and society's unwillingness to adequately tax themselves in order to buy civilization and buy the future of civilization by having a strong educational infrastructure. in order to buy civilization and buy the future of civilization by having a strong educational infrastructure.
Thank you.
Ms. Cordero.
Well, I just wanted to follow that by saying, you know, a lot of us will date ourselves, but, you know, some of us, we think this goes back prior to the 90s, back to, you know, the late 70s and Prop 13. And we are living with all of the dire fears that we, many people voiced at that time. And that was sort of a revolution, well, it was certainly presented as a revolution for the state. And it almost seems to me like we need something equally strong to start bringing us back because we have seen a continuous decline in services to education. Even when the lottery was enacted with the sort of promises that it was going to help save some of the revenue that we had lost from Prop 13, we were going to start getting it back through the lottery. And many people at that time recognized how questionable it was to sort of build the future of education on the backs of people's propensity for gambling. You know, and, you know, so I think we really need a strong, I'm just echoing your concerns, really need a strong commitment to being as forceful in trying to bring us back to where we were pre-Prop 13 as we were in moving us away.
Mr. House.
Thank you, Ms. President. And perhaps to our mayor and the others on our city council, I'll just comment. We're going to be looking at our legislative agenda for the city. If it's not, is it at this next board or next meeting? Or sometimes, when you're out of town, I think we're going to actually, yeah, a couple of weeks, it turns out. But we're, but there's a, it seems to me that there's a compelling interest for the city of Santa Barbara to weigh in on this. We have a lot of mutuality and the need to care for the kids who are, don't have necessarily after-school activities. We see in our Parks and Rec Department, we're picking up a big piece of that responsibility. And, you know, we're happy to do that. But also, you take that piece and you add to it the issue of young people acting out irresponsibly and the conditions that gave rise to that, the difficulties of dealing with young people who are dropping out earlier than later, or maybe not getting the kind of care that they need earlier on, perhaps because they've been in a classroom that had too many students, I don't know. You know, there's lots of causes. But we, in municipal government, get to be part of, bear part of that burden as well. And we certainly share a similar responsibility to our constituents. So perhaps we can consider looking at our piece of our legislative agenda that would address that, which would then enable you, Madam Mayor, to write letters on behalf of us and perhaps put us in a position to comment on some of the legislation that may come forward. Or if there's an opportunity, as Ms. Cordero is talking about, to weigh in on something revolutionary in the other direction, we could do that as well. So this may be something for us.
I just want to weigh in because I'm not sure that the city council is aware that the board passed a resolution on Tuesday to go up to Sacramento, essentially trying to fight what Governor Schwarzenegger has proposed in terms of cuts to education. And I think it would be very helpful if the city council were willing to look at a resolution of its own. And to, I know the California School Boards Association has been gathering those. I do not know if the cities have been gathering it, but in terms of helping education, I'm sure the California School Boards Association, Dr. Sarvis, could make sure that they get that, to join in the cause.
If I can just add to that, the Conference of Mayors has a group of mayors in California, I think there are about 15 of us, maybe a little bit more, tend to be the big cities, but also I'm in there, and it's called the Education Roundtable. And the governor has said he would like to meet with us, and I think it's in two or three weeks. But I need to probably get information from you all because he's interested in talking to the mayors about the effect of the budget on the children and on schools, too. Some of the mayors have responsibility for their schools and some don't, but it still affects the children in their communities. So I probably should work closely, maybe with Dr. Sarvis, to put forth the best ideas for the governor.
And if it turned out you were out of town as Mayor Protem, I'd be happy to carry that message, yes, thank you very much.
Do you speak Austrian?
Madam President, if I could just add on. First off, I think those last two items, I think were very important and certainly willing to participate in that. And Ms. Cordero mentioned something in the previous item that made me think a little bit on the budget. I mean, that was about land use and what your priorities are. And now we're getting to the budget, and you're also going to set other priorities. We're not, you're not alone in the budget crisis and challenges here, unfortunately. The city also has its budget concerns, and we're about also to look into the details of what we need to do as a city to provide essential services and also cut some funding because of potential reduced revenues and increased expenses on another level. Hopefully not to the same tune as yours, we're still, I guess, getting all that information. I don't, it won't be that big, but there's a potential, actually, over time, depending on certain court cases, that we could actually get actually extra funding taken away from the city that provides general services, like our police and fire and Parks and Rec and library. And, but the thing that Ms. Cordero mentioned, that kinds of, about prioritization, and we're going to move on to the next topic, which means so much to both of us, of maybe trying to work together and how, what each of the entities are doing in terms of reorganizing its own budget, how it interfaces with the other. Because I was thinking of last year with the city being able to, for example, augment its funding on a number of levels related to youth programs, but one of them specifically for junior high after-school programs in tune to, because the school district could not fund $20,000, $25,000, for example. I mean, that's a small ticket item compared to $4 million. But there's an example of, here was a need of mutual interest and a funding gap, and what works best between the two entities because there's so much overlap between the two in terms of coordination with our departments and your departments? So that we can sort of think, instead of two separate budgets that don't connect to each other, to see where they can connect and where perhaps we can utilize our funds that might go farther by working together. And I'm not quite sure in our, legally, how to do that, you know, because school district has its own purview with its own budget, and the city council has its own purview with its own budget. But at least to have conversations when we see those challenges and look what kind of cuts we're looking at in areas of mutual interest, that we see what effect a cut in one jurisdiction would have on the other. And if there's a way to try to reduce that negative impact as much as possible. So for all of us, as we're moving into the next several months of our budgets, to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're timed to move on to the response to youth violence.
It's him again. I'm going to ask Paul Turnbull to present some of the information we have on our response to youth violence. But I'd like to introduce that by making a couple of comments. Just like the city of Santa Barbara, our school district has been working to prevent youth violence long before last year's fatal stabbing. When Luis Angelinares was killed, we met within an hour and enacted a number of measures. We put a number of things in place last spring, did more this fall, and continue to seek ways to protect students and to prevent violence. Our, in schools, our greatest strength, again, is the staff, the very staff we were talking about. Adults connecting with students provide the best first line of defense against future trouble. Our safe school strategies are based on staff involvement, our standards of behavior for all students, clear expectations and consequences that are communicated to students and families, our reporting policies, swift disciplinary action, linking students and families to school and community resources, providing opportunities to dialogue and conflict resolution, the site-based programs, clubs, and activities that engage students in the life of the school. Those are all very important elements. As I said, our focus to safe schools began long before last year's tragic stabbing on State Street, and we have seen other examples since. For example, secondary school administrators have been active in monthly gang task force meetings with law enforcement, served by your own law enforcement community here, for more than a decade, which highlights another equally important point. We have always had a strong relationship with the city of Santa Barbara, and we are thankful for that. The police department has provided community resource officers on our campuses for years. Parks and Recreation after-school activities have been in place for years. Thank you for your partnership. Let me say a little more about what schools have been doing. We have our own campus safety assistants on our campuses. We've increased their salaries, and we've undertaken a series of campus safety trainings. Our board regularly updates policies on student conduct, student dress code, gangs, discipline, suspension and expulsion, nondiscrimination, and harassment. We communicate with parents regularly in English and in Spanish regarding the school code of conduct and zero tolerance for inappropriate behavior. We know that every staff member needs to share the responsibility for monitoring and for action. When we saw gang behavior increasing three years ago, the school board invited presentation by Santa Barbara Police Department's Ralph Molina. And Sergeant Molina represents and understands those gang issues well. We took to heart what he had to say, redoubling our efforts on campuses and re-establishing our zero tolerance policy about gang dress and behavior. As a result, our sites have been successful, and I'm proud to say that we've had relatively few incidents on our school campuses. But these are the same kids who are in the community, and we share the responsibility for those kids. We also have safe school committees and staff incidents response teams at each school. We've provided staff trainings on gang awareness education, we've reduced truancy rates. Our staff and students do a lot to support diversity and equity awareness. We have anti-bullying programs, character education programs, conflict resolution, peer mediation, the Too Good for Drugs Prevention Program, and many examples of school-based activities to inform parents about gang issues, to bring students together, and to engage at-risk youth. We also benefit from local programs such as All for One, that work directly with gang members. We have an ongoing collaboration with the Anti-Defamation League, with Beyond Tolerance, and with Just Communities. We have youth service specialists from CADA's Fighting Back Program on our campuses and counselors from Family Service Agency. Fortunately, national experts on gang violence such as Dr. Michael Furlong and Dr. Jill Sharkey are here in the community, and their work is important to our efforts. Importantly, just like our school clubs and sports programs, there are hundreds of youth-serving organizations all over this community working to keep students productively involved in adult-led activities. And this community should be very proud of the efforts of so many youth-serving organizations to engage our youth in productive, healthy choices. Within one hour of the March 2007 stabbing on State Street, I met with all of our secondary principals. We stopped upcoming minimum days. We reviewed our non-tolerance to dress, gang dress, gang symbols, gang behavior and re-establishment of, re-establishing those policies on our campuses. We authorized dog sweeps on an incident basis. We prepared to meet with, for the emotional, excuse me, the emotional needs of students, and we planned meetings with law enforcement. Your people came to us very quickly, we were at the table with Rich Gloss within a couple of days. We were pleased that the city stepped in quickly and increased school resource officer support. You put more resource officers on our campuses, thank you. And you stepped up your efforts in after-school Parks and Recreation's activities. Last spring, we stepped up efforts to work with several community agency and nonprofits to expand daily inner-school programs. We scheduled presentations by gang resource expert, Richard Ramos, reaching 4,000 students plus staff in 11 schools, 60 staff members in separate discussion groups, and four parent meetings with more than 200 adults in attendance. After last year's tragedy, the city provided even more help working to increase after-school activities, expanding Police Assistance League activities, even changing MTD bus routes, and we appreciate that, that was a biggie. That happened very quickly, it happened within days of the incident. This year, we reinstituted a program for the few juveniles with multiple arrest records who are serious habitual offenders, and we secured probation officer presence on our school campuses. That was lacking. City Parks and Recreation has started a new partner program to bring more youth-serving organizations onto our campuses after school. You'll hear about that in just a moment, I'm almost done. We're also pleased with the city efforts to increase job opportunities, that was big. Our Teachers Association has worked with us to change early release days so that they are late start days. Let's not let them out of school early, let's let them sleep in and bring them to school late. We do not see guns on our campuses, but we continue to strengthen our safe school programs, including pursuing grants to hire gang prevention specialists and expand parenting programs. The current city stakeholder meetings to continue to improve communication, coordination, collaboration among the many organizations that serve at-risk youth is another important step in the right direction, you'll hear more about that in just a moment. In order to be successful, we believe we need people on the street working directly with kids who are not involved in these activities and who are most susceptible to gang involvement. We have tremendous community resources in this city, and we believe that our collective determination to stem youth violence will prevail. And with that, Paul Turnbull, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, at least for another couple of months.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. This presentation, first of all, good afternoon, it's nice to see all of you together, big happy family. This presentation was put together by Michael Gonzalez, who is not here today, he sends his regrets. So, first of all, Mayor Bloom mentioned that the city is endeavoring to keep the streets clean and safe. The schools endeavor to make sure that the children are taught on a variety of levels. And let's talk about some of the things that we're actually doing in the schools, and then we'll lead through the issues related with violence and what we can do. Prevention, intervention, suppression, and then looking forward to next steps. First of all, things that we're already doing across all the campuses with students, with parents. We simply teach them that some behaviors, while they seem innocent, depending on how old you are or how young you are, can potentially lead to danger. For example, if you hang around known areas of gangs, either on the west side, the east side, all the way throughout Galita, understanding that while we're talking about Santa Barbara proper at the moment, we do reach all the way to the other side of Galita. By being at a gang hangout, dressing like a gang member, saying that you affiliate with gang members even though you may not actually, all of these things lead toward dangerous behavior. And then finally, it's important to understand that about 50% of gang violence or violence with youth are from non-members of gangs. This isn't necessarily when you read in the paper about a stabbing. This isn't necessarily when you read in the paper about a stabbing every so often. Increasingly, it seems, over the last year and a half, it's not just gang members who are being affected. It's non-gang members, it's their families, it's individuals who may just simply be in the wrong place at the wrong time. As far as prevention is concerned, now, some of this may seem redundant, and that's okay because that means more redundancy, the more we're doing things well, and we're doing them as quickly as we can. Dr. Sarvis mentioned All for One, for example, as one of the potential programs that we can work with community members and our students on campus and families. The Los Compadres program is also a very successful program that we've been working with. Mentoring and tutoring programs have been around for a little while, but starting about a year ago, actually a year and a half now, with the help of City Council and Roger Horton at Santa Barbara High School, there was a mentoring program that began and has had great success and great sweeping effect in a short amount of time. Finally, after-school programs, and then working with staff awareness. I'm not going to go into the after-school programs as much because I know that Parks and Rec is here, and I know that Chief Sanchez is here, and he'll talk about some of the other issues with the police department. Referral systems. We have referral systems within the school community, and then from the school community to the external community. Social services helps the schools in a variety of ways. It's important to understand that we have access to community services, and through the help, actually, of the police department and the city, we've found a way to keep our students and our families safe while also referring them outside of what we like to refer as our campus safety net. When you're talking about small children or early adolescents, it's hard to say that you're going to allow them to go meet with an adult off-campus, and you're not quite sure where the nexus is between something that could go well or not. We build parent awareness through a variety of measures. Violence prevention curriculum, as Dr. Sarvis again had mentioned, through Fighting Back and CADA, we have a great partnership. They have a research-based curriculum, Too Good for Drugs and Violence, that goes through our elementary, secondary schools as well. And then youth development and skill building through a variety of things, through ASB club activities that are on school campuses. We try to extend the length of our school day so that students are used to being on campuses beyond 3:00, 4:00, hopefully 5:00 will be a more attractive number to them in a short amount of time. Critical thinking all the way through interpersonal skills is highly important. The team approach, and this meeting is an excellent symbol of the team approach. We have two major entities inside the city boundaries working together in one meeting. We have a variety of different organizations and sectors of the city of Santa Barbara out in the audience who will speak to you pretty soon. All of these things together simply show us that not only can we react in a very quick way, and can we pull together resources quickly, but the collective memory is really important, historical memory, and making sure that these things don't come as cyclically as perhaps they could. Early identification of at-risk youth. We know so much about so many things. The issue that we have now is building the capacity in our school system, not only to identify those at-risk factors, but to actually react, and then try to make sure that we have interventions in place that work. On-campus suspensions versus off-campus suspensions. There's nothing better for some students than being suspended and being able to go home. So, much to their chagrin, we have on-campus suspensions with instruction in a variety of different areas, including counseling. And imagine the on-campus suspensions are actually decreasing because the students are realizing it's not so much fun. Employment programs was mentioned, and we will continue to build on that. The SARA employment program is just yet another new program on the horizon. In the area of suppression, and you'll hear about this, so I'll just mention it briefly, the first thing that we have to do is monitor our own discipline in dress codes. Make sure that we can update the dress code, especially as the students update their own dress codes and their own methods of discussing and sending messages out with what you wear or what you don't wear, making sure that we are consistently enforcing school rules. We have suspensions and graffiti removal is just two examples. The SRO, the School Resource Program, is highly important to us, as is having the DA's office probation and social services available as often as possible. We've had great luck and great success in this area, and it's thankfully to the City Council. Thank you. The Gang Task Force is an ongoing thing, as you had heard before as well. Now, we get into funding, so now we're looking ahead a little bit. Currently, we have youth service specialists on each of our secondary school campuses. That's through Fighting Back and CADA. They're working primarily with individuals with drug and alcohol issues. And we have been fortunate to reach out away from just drugs and alcohol. Unfortunately, the grant that provides us with two youth service specialists on each of our campus has sunsetted, or will be at the end of this year. It turns out that we do not qualify for the first one because we are a previous recipient. Some of the rules had changed, saying if you were originally a school district that had received this TOPS, Safe Schools Healthy Students Grant, you couldn't apply ever again. They changed that so that the district could apply, but only for schools who had not received the funds. Currently, each of our schools are receiving the funds, so we're off the table on that one. The second one was for a short time, very exciting for us, but we do not qualify for that one either, the School Community Violence Prevention Grant, because of the three items that you see below there. Gang membership, feeling safe at school, and being hit or pushed at school. Those are three descriptors on an annual Healthy Kids Survey, and we did not meet the state requirements to be bad enough to qualify for that particular grant. In fact, there's anecdotal evidence from an individual at the CDE. There's one particular school with two homicides in the last year that did not qualify. So, everything in context, I suppose. The next steps for us. Continued participation with the Youth and Families Coordination Initiative. There's a strategic approach that's being put together. It's highly important that this not be simply a symbol of cyclical issues in our community, that this actually stay as a historical document and memorialized. That we do actually find state, local, and federal funds that we can secure. Obviously, more training as far as youth violence for parents and staff. We'll continue on the great strides we've been making there. Hiring the Youth Violence Intervention Specialists, and that's what Dr. Sarvis was referring to when he said getting adults on the streets, working with our students. Yes, we work with our students until 3:00, but we work with them past 3:00 as well. There's that gray area where the city and the schools intermix, and it's important that we find some way to fill that gray area. Because we can offer as many clubs and as many activities as we like, if it's not the thing that the at-risk youth are looking for, they won't come. And we're beyond, I think, the point of making ourselves feel good by listing off 18 different clubs that we've begun, but we have three people coming to each one. Implement anonymous tip lines. We've spoken about that. And then to finally continue to build cultural awareness and civic respect. Respect and responsibility. I would add that second R, responsibility, and that goes from the adults down to the youth. And then finally, just a recognition that youth violence is not an inner-city issue. It's not a law enforcement issue. It's our issue. And without us working together by first recognizing it, there will be no next step. And the good news is that here we are, having recognized it, so I suppose in a 12-step program that we're a couple of steps in, I suppose. A coordinated community effort is, again, where we are right now. We've just begun, and if we've done well, and it sounds like, and it feels like, everything that's done, has been done to this point, has been done well, that it's laid the groundwork for a good future, rather than just simply a reaction and a statement that we'll be able to provide a great future for our students and the youth once they leave our campuses. Thank you.
And now, from a city perspective, and I'm going to make just a few, oops, brief comments. As you know, a year ago, almost, just in two weeks, we had that tragic homicide. And I think what was nice from both Dr. Sarvis's comments and also Paul's comments is just the, I guess, the overlap and the coordination that has occurred, not only in the last year, but really has been an ongoing effort for many, many years. But as you know, we really have ramped up in the last year. We're going to, I think, concentrate on three areas today. First, in the enforcement area, the police department, again, has always had strong efforts in this area, but has really ramped up. And I think when you look at some of the statistics, you'll see that just this issue about not accepting youth violence in this community is something that's very important to us. We've made a lot of progress, and I think, well, you'll see us make a lot of progress in the future. And then also the ramping up in our programs, not only in recreation, but throughout the whole community. And then lastly, we want to talk about the next steps in coordination, because one of the, one of the areas, what we found is, is this is a community that what we call is program-rich and programs for youth. It's not like we don't have hundreds of programs. It's how do we focus those programs on the kids that really are committing this violence? And that's our next step effort, is how do we better deal in that area? But first, let me turn it over to Chief Sanchez. He's going to make some comments on the enforcement area.
I'm in uniform because I spent some time at Harding School today, reading, as the mayor did, and Helene was there, and yeah, Nancy was there. There were a few of us there, having a great time, and it was the best part of this week. No offense to those of you that are sitting up there. But you know, what was interesting is that the children I was with are fifth graders, and I had lunch with them, and we sat around and had lunch, and Sally, she's just phenomenal. She did a great job. And there were a lot of parents there having lunch with their kids, and just fantastic. But as I sat around with just the kids and I from that classroom, I read, they wanted to talk about gangs. And one young person said, "Chief, what are we going to do about brown kids killing brown kids?" And then another one said, "You know, my big brother's a gang member, but I'm not going to be a gang member." So I needed to share that with you, because these things are not only going on in the minds of us adults, but certainly in the minds of a lot of those children who see it probably even more than any of us in this room. And we want to talk about a couple of things, but you need to understand that, you know, the police department does, you know, some reporters have asked me if I believe in prevention and intervention, and the answer is yes. But sometimes the intervention is me, and we don't want to get there every single time. But we do believe in that. I think everyone's already said that the resources are there, the caring is there. But I need to tell you, before we get into the statistics, that there are some young people who have consciously decided to be a gang member and to commit crimes and to victimize the community and each other. And we're not going to, the reality is, we're never going to save them all, but we'll certainly save all we can, and especially those that really do want to be saved. But over the last couple of years, especially with the two homicides that we had, it is amazing, the young people that we've come in contact with that have just made a conscious decision to be a gang member and to commit crime. And those are the ones that we deal with, and that's what I'm going to talk about. Because those are the ones that are not going to our Police Activities League, even though it's afforded them, who are not going to Nancy and her staff at Parks and Rec, and who are not standing on the corner of any street looking at the sign-up sheet for the next great positive activity. And that's the reality. And those are the ones that we are going to deal with harshly, because that's what it calls for. And we will never apologize to this community for protecting it. Over the last few months, I've met with hundreds and hundreds of parents and community members from both the east and west side, and most of them in the Spanish-speaking community. And I will tell you that the consensus is, in their estimation, that Camp Sanchez is not hard enough on gangs, that they're sick and tired of their children being intimidated at school, and that they can't send their kid to get a carton of milk without being intimidated by a gang member or pressured to use drugs or join the gang. And they are sick and tired of it, and they are ready to support the police department in whatever it takes to solve crime in their community, because they care about their community and their children. So, I need you to know that, because they want us to be even harder. Some of them have given me some suggestions that we certainly cannot repeat nor utilize, but they care, and you just, you need to know that. It says there that we have 14 officers in five disciplines at a cost of 1.6 million per year, but I need you to know that we have about 140 sworn, so we really have 140 sworn working gangs. But full-time, we have 14 officers in street enforcement, in investigation and follow-up, in the DARE program, school resource officers, and of course, our Police Activities League that I'll talk about at the end before Nancy comes up. Over the years, when we have had to make cuts in our organization, in the police department, the one division that we have never taken people from is anything having to do with youth. Never. We've taken beat coordinators. One time, we took one DARE officer at one point. We've taken motor officers and all that stuff that you know we deal with. But the one area that we've never cut at all has been the area of youth, and we're very proud of that. Enforcement-wise, over the last couple of years, certainly with our two homicides, we have reorganized ourselves a little bit in order to have more people on duty. Prior to that, we, our gang enforcement officers, were on duty about five to six days a week, mostly at night. Today, as we speak, it's seven-day coverage with our gang officers, day and night, and it's really working very, very well. Part of that has been, and I'll go over it in a couple of slides from now, about the enhancement of our bike patrols. That has cost us a whole bunch of money, but worth every cent. And I'll get into those statistics in a minute. Intervention and prevention, obviously, our Police Activities League, and I'll talk about that in a second as well. In responding to crimes, investigations, arrests, and support for prosecution, we do this. This is what we do. This is what we signed up to do. And our detectives are doing an outstanding job in terms of making a lot of arrests, sending a lot of cases to the district attorney for filings, juveniles and adults, in terms of gang membership and gang crime. Directed patrols, as I mentioned to you before, we have approximately 140 sworn, and I will tell you that in the last three weeks, we have retrained every sworn officer again in gang, with further gang training. And I'll tell you why. Over the last few years, our special enforcement team, our SET team, who works gangs full-time, a sergeant and six officers, they do not drive around in black and whites. They drive around in plain cars, but in uniform, or in a shirt that says "Police" and things like that. And it was amazing, but when the SET officers would go by a gang location or to approach some gang members, many times they would run, and, you know, the chase was on. But whenever these same gang members would see a black and white, they would just sit there and wave, because we were so busy chasing the radio calls in the black and whites that they knew that for the most part, the officers in the black and whites were not going to stop and have a conversation with them. So we have changed that, and it has been extremely, extremely fruitful. Also, as you know, we have one police station, and we have a briefing room there where the officers brief before every shift. They talk about all the things that are going on in town, and then they go to work. What we've been doing over the last year and a half is we've been having our briefings in a variety of places around town. Bonnet Park, Franklin Center, Franklin School, right on the corner of where Pennywise is. And the first time we did that was over across the street from Pennywise, where the officers suited up, got into black and whites, and caravan 12 cars to the Franklin Center. Now, you can imagine what the neighbors were thinking. The officers got out, were there outside of the Franklin Center, they did their briefing, and more and more people were coming out of their homes to say, "Why are all these cops here, and why are all these police cars here?" And the neighbors were watching, trying to figure this out. When briefing was over, and the officers walked to their cars, over 100 people applauded from that community. That was huge. We learned a valuable lesson, that we have to be more accessible to the community, period. So since then, on a weekly basis, we have briefings at Bonnet Park, Franklin Center, front of Pennywise. And last month, three times, we did briefings at 11:00 at night in the parking lots of apartment buildings on both the east and west side, and then spoke to the residents of those apartments right after briefing. We've never done that before. So, when we talk about directed patrols, that's what that also includes, and we're very, very proud of that. And let me tell you, the community... you, the community just loves us, loves us for that. It's just a great thing. Gang sweeps and gang association warrants, we continue to do that. We're doing more and more. Basically, we go hunting, plain and simple. We go hunting. Because people are calling in that there are gang locations that are not being attended to, they're tired of it, they're tired of the intimidation. And we gather up our troops, we get a few sergeants, and, you know, we get some sergeants like Sergeant McGrew and the other guys who've been around a while, and in a matter of minutes, the task is over. And we're very successful. And again, the community appreciates it. In the last two weeks, after we've done some of these gang sweeps and warrants, our phones have rung off the hook. Not one, not one complaint. Comments like "It's about time" is said, or "Thank you." So we're doing the right thing. The increased deployment during community events, you know, we have increased that. And it's self-explanatory. It's been pretty successful. And we just bring more people in on overtime. We have buyback days because of our schedule. Sometimes we have some hours where the officers actually owe us hours. So they come in on those hours to do the gang issue. We reactivated our bicycle patrol. And from May 2007 to July 2008 is really our goal. So far, we've worked this, just the bicycles have worked over 2400 hours. We've made 33 felony arrests, most of those gang arrests, weapons, narcotics, assaults, rapes. And these are the guys on bikes, not the guys in the police cars. I'll get to them in a minute. These are just the guys on the bicycles. The guys on the bicycles are not dealing, someone called the other day and wondered if we were dealing with the guys selling corn, you know, if the guys on the bicycles are chasing the corn vendors and the, no, they're doing one thing and one thing only, and that's a gang issues, period. That's all we're doing with the bikes. And through the 2400 hours, 33 felony arrests, 90 misdemeanor arrests, 469 citations, that could include anything from, you know, vehicle violation, drinking in public, those sorts of things. So far, we have made, just, again, just the people on the bicycles have interviewed and made field contacts of over 500 individuals, most if not all gang members. Some repeated, but that's the number. Prior to me getting here, there was a program called SHOW. I am, if you're going to blame anybody for bringing it back, you can blame me. I thought it was a good thing to do. I know there was some controversy a few years ago with it, but I will tell you that it's very, very effective, and we're doing it again. But we've enhanced it now in terms of the family connection, where the child who is, by the way, they're all wards of the court, and they're on probation, and they're attending our schools. And we believed, I believed, that we needed to bring it back because if little Johnny was doing something on the weekend that your employees didn't know about, and then they show up on school on Monday, I believe we're obligated to tell your principals, "Hey, you know, he's not in custody anymore. He belongs to you. He's on campus. Keep an eye out." Not just for the protection of others, but for the protection of that individual. We have now done some other things in terms of enhancing SHOW, and that is by bringing in the family portion of advising the family, talking to the family, and the officers advising the family of positive options for their family. So that's working out great. Right now, we only have four young people who have been certified in terms of SHOW. A few people ask, "Well, you know, is this profiling?" The answer is yes. It's profiling criminals. And we don't care what color you are, what gender you are, where you were born, where you're going, how you comb your hair. You commit a crime in the Cedar Center Barra, we're going to come after you, plain and simple. But the gang members have really begun to rile us up a little bit more, and we're being very, very aggressive, and we are not ever going to slow down. But people said, "Well, you're just focusing on Latinos." Well, we only have Latino gangs in the Cedar Center Barra, for one. And then I said, "100%, 100% of the victims of those SHOW kids were also Latino. 100%." So what do you want me to say? And they said, "Okay, chief. See you later." And down the road we went. And it's working out great. And believe you me, your school administrators really appreciate the partnership. And to repeat what Dr. Sarvas said, we have a great partnership with the schools. It continues to get better. And it's all our responsibilities. We only have four so far currently certified. Street enforcement, investigation and follow-up, these are two, these are all felony arrests, these are assaults, these are stabbings, these are assaults with bats, knives, whatever it takes. So all those 71 arrests, just in our street enforcement investigation crew of six people, they've made 71 felony arrests, and we've made, there have been 152 total charges that the district attorney has charged these young people with, all gang members. Now I want to talk briefly about our DARE program. Let's put them up there. We still teach DARE. We had one semester, maybe two, that we did not teach DAREs because we were down on people and I needed people in patrol, and we needed traffic. So I had to put people on motorcycles, and that meant that we had to take the DARE officer out for about a year. We now have DARE back in the schools, and it is a great program. I taught it myself back in the dinosaur days when they first started it, and it still continues to be a great program. We have added another school resource officer, as Dr. Sarvas said, and that's a great partnership with your schools. Our Police Activities League, we are currently serving over 1,300 young people with after-school programs. And it's just, just a phenomenal, phenomenal program. A lot of these young people could go the other way, but they have made the opposite conscious decision to do some other things in their life, which is to, you know, stay in school, respect your parents and your teachers, do your homework, don't commit a crime, don't do dope, and don't join a gang. 1,300. And many of them are in our after-school and summer programs with Nancy and her staff. There are some great, and Paul mentioned it, we are a resource-rich community, period. I think the only question I have, and I've had it for the 28-plus years I've been doing this, and that is, how in the world can we get together someday and develop a strategy where we identify the real hardcore and their families and the root of all of this stuff to get to them? Because those are the ones causing us the problems. And we need to identify them better, whether it's to arrest them, give them other options, but certainly to speak to the families. After the last homicide we had that we haven't solved yet, but I promise you, an arrest is imminent, and we're on it, 24 hours a day almost, quite frankly, seven days a week. And we're going to solve that murder as well. We did a search warrant at a location, and I tagged along, and we went to this house. And the guy that we were looking for, or, well, not me, but my folks were looking for, I stayed in behind the line until it was safe, and then I went in. We went into this very nice-looking house, and I thought we were at the wrong location. I said, "A gang member doesn't live here." And my folks said, "Yeah, he's a bad guy. And we need to go in there with force because he's had weapons before. So this should, this should be very interesting." It was a beautiful house, neatly kept, flowers in the yard. It was just beautiful. And we walked in, and he was not there, unfortunately. Well, we got him the next day, but he wasn't there that day. And there was a young lady, his older sister, who answered the door. She let us in. We showed her the search warrant. She said, "Come on in. Don't mind if I continue my coffee?" No, she just sat there. And there was a 12-year-old little boy eating Cheerios at the kitchen table, watching us, going to dresser drawers and cabinets and closets and all that ugly stuff that sometimes we leave a bad taste with, unfortunately. And I stepped outside for a minute, and this gentleman walked up with a shirt on from his place of work. And he walked up to me, and he recognized me, and he didn't speak English. And he said, "You're the chief of police?" And I said, "Yes." And he said, "Can you tell me what's going on in that house?" And I explained it to him. And he said, "Okay, because that's my house. And I know why you're here." He says, "Look, my 18-year-old, I've lost him. He has chosen a gang lifestyle, and we can't change him. My wife and I work hard. We actually own this house. Can you do me a favor? Can you help me with the 12-year-old?" This happens daily to my officers, from parents who say, "I lost this one. Can you help me with that one?" So I immediately called Adrian Gutierrez, who was our PAL guy at the time. He's now a B coordinator. And Adrian came over there with a lot of information. The dad began to cry. It was tough. It was tough. And the next day, we returned and arrested Junior. The 12-year-old is a PAL member now, and we're very excited about that. So who knows what's going to happen? But that's police work, too. And we do it every single day, and I'm very, very proud of my people for that. Our Campership Alliance, every summer, we take about 500 kids to camp. Our budget for PAL is over $700,000. By the way, that's not general fund money. We raise that every year, about $700,000 to $800,000 at one event, at one event. And all of it, every single penny goes to programs. It does not pay an officer's salary, does not pay for fuel, does not pay for anything except programs for the kids, which pays for the summer programs, currently the six basketball teams that we have, the mentorship program, the tutoring programs. And we have other resources, some banks that have donated computers and mentors. And if you want to see, if you want to get a great feeling, you go down there Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. into the back building and watch, standing room only, of young people who are at risk, who are there to do their homework, to get tutored, to get mentored, and to not be a gang member. And we need to pay more attention to them, quite frankly, and their successes than the gang members. We'll take care of that. That's what we signed up to do. But we need to begin to celebrate some of these other issues. I'll go quickly. PAL started in 1999 with 50 children. We now have over 1,300 in our programs all over, all over the city, with a great partnership with the schools and our after-school programs and our outstanding relationship with Nancy and Parks and Rec. So ladies and gentlemen, I will tell you, we got it going on in this city. The challenge is, how do we get some of the ones that refuse to join this, and some of those families who feel lost and hopeless into joining these things? That's the key. Because we're always going to have kids that join it, and we're always going to have families that care. But the ones that are committing the murders, the assaults, the burglaries, the robberies, the use of weapons, quite frankly, they don't sign up for this stuff. Very rarely, rarely. It's a miracle when they do. And we're still going to have to deal with that. And that's why you hired me. We have some great relationships, and I'll close with this. We have some great relationship with UCSB, martial arts schools, basketball, Everybody Dance Now. We've got all sorts of great partners, and great things are happening. We have another relationship with Zona Seca and their, and their kids. And I'll end with this story, and I'll turn it over to Nancy. After Angel Linares was killed, we went to, I went to the Hispanic Chamber and asked them to step, step it up a little bit. Because every year, they have a Hispanic Chamber yearly event where we all get dolled up, and we go and we celebrate. The mayor was there. This was a great night. We celebrate those young people in our schools who are getting scholarships to USC and Stanford, and that's wonderful. We need to keep doing that. We also celebrate our Business People of the Year and all those great things. And it's a great night. But I went to the Hispanic Chamber, and I said, "You know, I've got 40 kids at Zona Seca. A third of them are teen moms. The others are struggling in school. A third of the others have an alcohol abuse issue or drug issue, and about a third of those are gang members." But they go to Zona Seca every week to try to change their life around. I said, "So I need you to please pay for their dinner at the function so they could go see what successful stories are of people who struggle just like them." And we had a great night that night. And it was really amazing because we celebrated the Business People of the Year, and we all, all 500 people clapped, you know. But we sat down and we clapped, and hey, great job. The kids who are going to all those wonderful institutions of learning, they also got an applause. But what the kids that were there, the 40 kids that were there with all those issues in their life, did not know that we were going to give them an award that night. And the Hispanic Chamber came up with the award that's going to be every year now. It's called the U-Turn Award. And we called the kids up, and they couldn't believe it. They could not believe it. A little side story to that is that I met with the kids a week before. I took them out to dinner to talk about, you know, manners, dress. And one of the young ladies at the dinner the week before raised her hand, and she's 15, and she says, "Can I wear my prom dress? Because I had a baby last year, and I've never been to a prom, but I had my prom dress. Can I wear my prom dress?" And I said, "Yes." Three other girls said the same thing. None of them over 16 years old. So they showed up that night, and when they called them up on stage, every single one of them, including the former gang members, hugged me. And they came up to the podium, and 500 people stood up and gave that group a standing ovation. We need to do that. That's police work, too. But I will tell you that my piece is quite honestly something that's very obvious. And we have our, to quote my boss, "Our eye on the ball in terms of arresting those that need to get arrested," and being as hard as we can within our legal system to keep all of us safe. All of our children deserve to be safe in their schools. And we have gang members on a daily basis intimidating our children at school and after school. That is unacceptable. It's ludicrous. We're not going to put up with it. Because I'm telling you, the community has already told me, they are not going to put up with it either. The communities on both sides of town have told me that if anybody ever complains about how we arrest gang members who commit crimes and kill people, there are going to be about 500 people at city council to defend your police department. Because they want to be safe. And we are going to keep them safe as much as possible. That is my long-winded, hot-air chief report. And Nancy's going to come up and talk about some great, great things. I don't know if I should open it up to questions now, or if that's not appropriate, or is that it? No?
Chief Sanchez, I, I think it would be very worthwhile if you could tell anybody who's watching it on television particularly, how they can help fund this PAL program.
Well, you know, we don't really do any solicitations. We just tell people that every April or May, it depends on when we get the location. If they want to call 897-2400, and just ask to be transferred to the PAL number, we'll let you know when that function is. And you can donate at that time to PAL or show up to the event.
What's that telephone number again?
It's 897-2400. And someone will transfer, just tell them you want to be transferred to the Police Activities League, and someone will pick up the phone and send you information about the event, the table you can buy, or what you can do for the young people, which includes maybe even some mentoring or tutoring yourself. But it's very low-key, and it's one time a year. And when you raise that type of money, it's obvious that people care. But again, I'll end with the obvious. We're going to keep you safe. Gang crime, gang membership, gang activity and behavior is absolutely unacceptable on and off campus. And I'm telling you right now, I'll never apologize for this. We're just going to hammer it hard because that's what you pay us to do. You deserve that. Thank you. Nancy.
Hi, good afternoon. Boy, hard to follow that act. I will, however, and also attempt to be brief. First off, I wanted to just give you a status report. We gave you a very lengthy report at your joint meeting in June on what all of the new and expanded programs were going to be that were city priorities, that city council provided additional funding for. And I'm And I'm not gonna go through all of those, because you got that report, but I am gonna give you just a status report of where we are with that. First, as a reminder, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know if I introduced myself, and I should do that since we're being televised, but I'm Nancy Rapp. I'm the City Parks and Recreation Director. Following the, the community focus on youth violence and the discussion of recreation and the role that it plays in prevention and intervention, there were three community priorities that came out of those community meetings. Number one was, how do we increase the provision of recreation programs to underserved neighborhoods? Two, that our after-school programs are extremely important, especially at the junior high level. And three, youth jobs. Okay. So these are just some of the new and expanded programs that have been in operation since July first, when the funding went into place. The funding was approved like the third week in June, and by the second week in July, we were up and running. So funds that were determined to help kids in the, in the summer did. And so we're very proud of that. Summer Fund is a free drop-in program that operates at three elementary schools. We added one more additional site at Ortega Park, and we increased our participation in that program by thirty percent. We also introduced a community handball program that operated at Franklin, Franklin Community Center and the West Side Boys and Girls Club that served over a hundred and sixty kids. The Youth Alliance for the Arts and the UCSB Tutoring Program were two programs introduced at the Franklin Center that work very specifically with kids in that immediate neighborhood. And in fact, the Youth Alliance for the Arts is the photo that you see, and the majority of those kids were, our staff provided outreach. These are the ones that are hanging out in front of the street on the Penny, at the Pennywise Market. So we have volunteers from the community that are working with them and different arts programs. So we are very proud of the fact that that's a very targeted program, very successful. We also have introduced and secured funding for Fun on the Run, a mobile recreation program which will take recreation out into those parts of our community that do not have access to pro, recreation programs, either at the school sites because of the fears in the neighborhood of, of commuting or walking, if you will, back and forth from school, and to those parts of our community like the Lower West Side, which do not have locations for recreation. And also, one of the other things that we did was we eliminated the fees for all of our youth sports after-school leagues, and we have doubled our participation thus far this year, which was our goal. I wanted to just give you a quick update of the twelve thirty-five Teen Center, because I think this is something that people in the community are looking to. We've been open now almost a year. We've had over six thousand visits by teenagers. We have three hundred and thirty-six members who have officially signed up. We estimate that we probably have a hundred and fifty different kids that participate on a regular basis at the Teen Center. Our average daily attendance was about thirty during the summer, and it's about sixteen during a school year. Sixty-six percent of the participants are male, and you can see that the primary age group that we're drawing is the thirteen-to-fourteen-year-olds. Now, one thing that I will tell you is, this average daily attendance may sound low to some of us who have a lot of high expectations. This is the norm for our, as we compare ourselves to other teen centers in other communities, you know, of similar size, this is the norm. So we consider ourselves successful. We are continuing to do outreach and to bring in more programs and partners into the Teen I wanna talk a bit about the junior high after-school program. As I mentioned, the junior high program is one of our community priorities. The city and the school district have funded this program together, emphasizing the importance to the community. There is, and we have all acknowledged, a significant desire on our part to see kids, more kids, engaged on campus after school. And we have some challenges, because the program that we have in place has suffered from a variety of challenges over the years, and we're seeing some new challenges. And so we are seeing some challenges to participation, some decline in participation. There are a number of factors that are contributing to that, but it is of significant concern to us. I am, I wanna talk about that just a little bit. Some of the challenges that city and school district staff have been working on, and when I say school district staff, I mean the principals. We've been very appreciative of Paul Turnbull's time and his involvement with this, but really looking at the challenges of scheduling. Each of the schools has a different schedule. We have students who are doing seventh period, which means that programs can't all start at the same time, and that's a challenge that we haven't figured out a solution for yet, but we are all still trying. We also are having challenges with student interests, and the program that worked for so many years is not necessarily drawing the kids now, and we are looking at that. We're very appreciative of the school board for giving us the go-ahead to bring on some new community partners. In the spring, we expect that our participation will go up directly reflective of that change. PAL will be coming in and offering hip-hop classes and martial arts programs. Shape of Voice is going to engage kids in the publication of their youth teen-oriented magazine. And, I'm sorry, I'm losing my, my notes on our partners. Club West will be doing a track program, which we haven't been able to offer before. And also, the Surf Rider Foundation is gonna be doing some community service product. That's just four organizations, and already we have added new activities to engage kids. But it's not enough, and we need to be talking about more. We've had some very engaging conversations with the Santa Barbara Education Foundation. We made a presentation to them on the program. They wanna be a partner. They wanna be a partner and help us find funding for an, a student survey on interests and needs. So we will look forward to bringing you additional information on that. But we are certainly starting to see more interest from the community on being a part of making the junior high after-school program more successful. And we've also talked about the challenges with providing outreach and engaging those kids who are least likely to be involved, and how do we do that? So we're having those discussions. Staff recruitment and retention. We are the Parks and Recreation Department, a major employer of hourly employees in the city, and we have our challenges, and this, this program is no different, and that's up there, because it affects our program quality. And that is a struggle for us, and it will continue to be a struggle as long as we are looking at hourly staff, and you, everyone knows as well as us the challenges to that, so we are trying to overcome that. And lastly, I wanna talk about funding a bit, and I appreciate the discussion that was held earlier on the school district's funding challenges, the city's funding challenges. And I wanted to bring you up to date and let you know kind of where we are. The cost of the junior high program is about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. It's roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars per school. To, to this year, for this funding year, the school district contributes forty thousand, which was a decrease from sixty the previous year. The city of Santa Barbara has provided in-kind salaries for administration and program coordination of about fifty thousand dollars. That's been our contribution in the past. This year, the city stepped up and provided on a one-time basis thirty-five thousand dollars to both compensate for the cut that the district needed to make in their funding and to add more funding into the junior high program. Next year, that amount, again, one-time money, goes down to twenty thousand. So we're gonna have some challenges there. The good news is, the city of Goleta, which has historically funded about seven thousand dollars, and a reminder, cost per school is about thirty-seven thousand, they more than stepped up to the plate and expressed their desire to be more of an equal player. Ms. Sarah Hanna and I made a presentation to the Goleta City Council a couple of weeks ago. They increased their allotment to this year to ten thousand dollars and indicated that they would look at increasing that amount up to twenty-seven thousand potentially in the year to come. And so we are very pleased at that support, especially given the discussion that we're gonna be having in the spring about this program and the funding for this program. So one of the things that I wanted to share with you, because we will be coming back to you, is that this program really needs to have a fresh look. It needs to involve people in the community, because clearly, there is an interest in having others be involved in having this program engage more kids on campus. And we really would like to see that come together as, I'm gonna use the term "task force," but that's really what we need, and the planning needs to go into place now. Because as you're having your discussion about budget, and the city is having their discussion about budget, we really need to know, how much money do we have on the plate for fall? And that decision, it's hard when that decision comes at the end of June, because school district personnel are, you know, not as available during the summer, when the planning for the program needs to take place. So the time is now. I just wanted to give you that head-up, the good news, the bad news. We're very pleased with the comments from the city of Goleta and their city council. I think that demonstrates their level of interest and support for this program in their community. And very quickly, I wanna talk about the two youth jobs programs. The city runs a program through Parks and Recreation that placed this, since July first, placed thirty-seven youth in city programs and businesses, and these are job training programs. Most of those youth are high school and just out of high school. And then, SARE Jobs for Progress. This is the grant that we received from the Workforce Investment Board, and you heard Lucero earlier when she came up and introduced herself. This is a three-year renewable grant, anticipated to serve over those three years, up to two hundred in-school and out-of-school youth. As an update, they now have established five offices in Santa Barbara County, three of which are in South County. And it was our desire that those offices be situated in the communities where they were most going to interact with youth living in those areas. So the offices are at the Franklin Center, the West Side Center, and at the housing, one of the Housing Authority complexes. They've hired their staff. They have engaged over twenty local organizations in informational meetings. They've been working very closely with local school officials, government agencies, to tell about the program and build those relationships. And they have engaged over twenty youth, and they have fifteen youth already registered in the program. And all of this is just since they opened their doors in November. So we're very, very pleased at the progress that they're making. And unless you have any questions, I'm, I'm done. So, any, any questions? If not, I'm gonna defer to Jim Armstrong.
And I'm gonna skip through a couple of these, 'cause I think I can cover this quickly. When we met with the council in November and gave them a progress report on our efforts in youth violence, the mantra we heard from the council is, "How can we get better coordination among all of the various organizations and entities on the South Coast towards reducing youth violence?" As I said earlier, we are a program-rich community, and there are just a tremendous number of silos out there of programs, each doing their own thing, and yet, although I think there's good communication, we need to do a lot more. Let me kinda put in perspective. Here's the South Coast. There are twenty-six, almost twenty-seven thousand kids on the South Coast enrolled in public schools right now. In the city of Santa Barbara, that's almost seventeen thousand. In our city, we believe there's around eleven gangs, approximately seven hundred and fifty members or associates, and about a hundred what we would call hardcore. And these are estimates. I could probably plus or minus fifty or a hundred percent, I think, at least on the bottom two numbers. Another way to look at it, and this was the bull's eye that some of you have seen in my office for the last month, is we've got all these kids in pro, or involved in things, but how do we get at that bull's eye in the middle there? How do we focus programs on those kids there, many of whom don't wanna participate in programs? They're not gonna go to the Teen Center unless they're dragged there, or they're not gonna participate in the PAL program. How do we focus our efforts there? And that's the challenge. Then you look at the folks who are working on that. You got the enforcement folks, and it's not just our own police department. It's the county sheriff, it's probation, the education community, and again, it's not just your school district, but it's others that are working on the area. It's the continuation schools, the support services, the hundreds of nonprofit organizations that are involved in various youth activities, recreation, not only our recreation program, but recreation programs and private services throughout the community. And then the issue of employment, the, the private sector in terms of providing jobs. And our, and our challenge is, how do we get a focus of those folks to work together in a more concentrated area? About a month ago, we got forty of what I would call the key stakeholders from these groups together. Bryan Service participated. We had the continuation school, people from county schools. We had probation, our own police department, the county sheriff's office. We had all of the major nonprofit funders, all of the major foundations, as well as several of the larger service providers. We could not invite every service provider, or we would have had to have the meeting in a very large facility. We had recreation providers, and we have several of the major employers. And we basically had a brainstorming session for about three hours, focusing on, how can we do a better job to coordinate our activities? It was a messy meeting. There was, you know, very strong opinions. A lot of folks wanted to look back over the last ten years and say, what mistakes have been made? Wanted to talk about programs that had been in place, and then because of funding or other issues had gone away, and how would you get those programs back? But at the end, I think it was a very healthy dialogue in terms of how do we go forward? And I wanna just share with you a few of the conclusions from that group. These were the consensus points. First, the violence is unacceptable. Our community, for our community, we just cannot accept violence. It's about kids, it's about family, it's related to poverty, legal status, neighborhoods, et cetera. We need to learn more about what's causing this violent behavior, 'cause we really don't understand it. And with all of the programs and services that we have in this program-rich community, we're not reaching kids at that core, at that bull's eye. Additional consensus points. There's already work going on to produce a comprehensive inventory. In fact, there's three or four different efforts going on right now by various groups to inventory the various programs that are, that are already, that are, that are taking place to help youth in the community. There's clearly ways we can improve how we work with each other. Some of them are very basic issues. Transportation, how do we, you know, this coordination with MTD and with buses, and how do we have better transportation? Hours of school, you know? We've had discussions with, with the school district about how do we get information on campus without besieging kids with flyers? There was a strong belief that we need some type of strategic planning effort, and that there's a foundation on which we can build, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel. In fact, we, we were pointed to other strategic plans that have been done in this community as well in other communities that we can build on, so we don't need to go all the way back to square one. So, we don't need to go all the way back to square one. We also need to institutionalize our programs. One of the real problems we've had is, is the funding that goes up and down on some of these programs. And of course, it's pretty interesting, when you think about the prior discussion you had about the school district budget, and the discussions we're having at the city, about precisely the same issue, the cyclical nature of the funding. It's a regional issue. This is not just a city of Santa Barbara issue. It's this whole South Coast issue, and really, it's related even to things going on in Ventura County and up north. And it requires regional collaboration. We're not sure that the city should take the lead on this. We may be the convener, but we may not be the appropriate body to take the lead on it. And again, we're facing, not only are public agencies facing budget constraints, but several of the private agencies, and we talked a little about the Fighting Back Program and the resources they have on the school campus. A lot of the private organizations are facing severe funding constraints, because of the economic downturn and just the nature of how they get money. We came up with some draft, kind of a work plan, support for developing one comprehensive inventory of services and resources, and there's efforts already going on in that area, to start working on some type of strategic planning process, making recommendations on how we can all work together, and facilitate the improvement of new coordination efforts. And to get to form a steering committee. We have our next meeting of a smaller group, what we're calling the Core Group, that will be held in, let's see, two weeks from now, to continue to move forward on this. I think it's a good first start, but it's a complicated process, it's difficult, it's gonna take everybody working together, and probably with many different iterations. But I think we've had a good first start on going for that next part, which is the coordination and better communication between the various service providers. So, and I just want to mention some other community efforts. The United Ways doing some things in strategic planning, the YMCA. There's an organization we weren't even aware of until recently, called the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission. It's a county-wide organization, that's actually doing an inventory right now of programs. And there's a Collaborative Communities Foundation, Collaborative Communities Foundation, which is a new organization that's also working on these areas. So, there's other folks doing it. Again, we're trying to bring everybody together, so we don't just duplicate what each others are doing. So, that's a conclusion of the city report, and I'm available for questions, as well as the chief and Nancy from the city side.
Thank you. My goodness. How about some public comment for, do we have very many? No, just two? Okay. Three minutes each?
Okay. Well, first up was Jared Schwartz, who apparently has left, so, okay. And then, next is Lucero Marquez.
I'll try to make this brief. First of all, I want to thank, you know, all the parties for making their presentations, and our partner, City Parks and Rec, and representative Nancy Rapp, as well, who have been very supportive of our program. And next, what I, the reason I decided to come back up here was to address all of you here, since it's very nice to have everybody in the same room, school board and city council members, everyone, mayor, thank you. And as we have explained about our program, we are looking to serve about 200 youth, and again, that would be 200 youth for the next three years. Now, what I wanted to clarify as part of our program is, what does it mean when we say, "When we serve youth"? Does that mean that they come and sign up to our program? What does that mean? Really, for our program, in order for youth to be successful in our program, and for our funder to consider our youth successful in our program, there needs to be an improvement, right, shown. And part of that would be to, for them to achieve a high school diploma or GED if they haven't already done so, and even go on to higher education. But the other factor is also employment, which is something that, as I addressed before, we engage youth in work experience, but that's not the success. The success in our program is for the youth in our program to become self-sufficient. So, what does that mean for our program, again, in order for them to be able to use the skills attained in our program, and the work experience that they were able to benefit from, to be placed at another job in something more permanent, be it part-time or full-time, where they can actually say, you know what, I used this work experience, and I'm getting a job in another field, something related, something that's interesting to me, and that this is what I want to pursue. So, that is a success. That's a youth that was successfully served as part of said Jobs for Progress. And that's something that I wanted to clarify. Also, this is where all of you come in, as well as the city. I know the city has a great investment in our program to be successful, and you have been very key in this grant to have happened. And part of the success of the program, as I mentioned, is to identify positions for youth to be transitioned to after the work experience. So, this is where the city, the mayor, city administrator, all come into play, where you could direct your staff and the different departments to be able to work and say, okay, now that we're looking at the budget, we're looking at what, how we can help the youth in our community. This is where we can say, we need to identify positions in each department, we need to look at where youth can gain, use some of the work experience that they've gained, and be able to place permanently in employment. And this is really the opportunity, or the best way, that we can ensure the success of the youth in our program, so that they can be self-sufficient. So, that is my message to all of you. And again, you know, let's move forward, and let's take the next step, and that is the next step, and I will be in contact with you about it. But I would love to hear more comments about that as well, and definitely, let's make a commitment, and let's follow through on this process, so that we don't just start a program and let it die, but really ensure that our youth are indeed successful, and that they do improve their lives and their futures. Thank you.
Lucero? I have two, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Two questions. One, could you define, give me your definition of possesses employment barriers?
For us, there are different, I guess, issues that we look at with youth. They could be single parents, they could be basic skills deficient, which means they are at an eighth grade or below level in academics, as far as reading or math. It could also mean someone who has been on probation, someone who has been expelled from school, who dropped out of school. All those are looked at as barriers.
Employment barriers.
Employment barriers.
Okay, good. Just so I have a working definition of what you're looking at.
Yes.
And when you have the services, and you say occupational skills training, where do you do that?
What we do is, we direct the youth to the different resources available in our community. So, we are working with Santa Barbara City College for some of that. We are working with Adult Education, so whatever there is the program that is best suited for the youth, that's where we direct our attention to, and that's how we are able to do that. So, we don't necessarily do it ourselves, but we do.
No, no, no. I'm wondering, what facilities do you use? What, you know, where do you send them to be skilled and trained?
And that's.
To become skilled.
So, it really depends on what skill they are looking to build on. And some of the work experience is also part of that, where, you know, we are looking to place youth in different areas where they can obtain some skills in that area that they are interested in.
Well, I think in this overall plan or process that we're going through collaboratively, together, the piece you just saw last, that Jim, and Nancy, and the chief presented, making sure that there are these resources, and where are the gaps? What's missing? What kinds of skills do people want? Especially the ones either in that target bull's eye, or the ones around the fringe. I'm thinking of the young people at Puente High School. And what happens to them after that? So, this is something that I think that we can definitely use your information that you gleaned, to give us more insight into what's missing in the community, and what would be helpful, and how do we get there. And thank you. I also want to acknowledge that the county is really a huge player in this. This money actually comes from the county, and I know that our department, especially Nancy Rapp, is instrumental in getting it to us in the city, but we need to acknowledge that partnership as well.
Yes, the grant is completely federal funds, and was awarded by the Workforce Investment Board of Santa Barbara, of Santa Barbara County, yes.
Thank you very much for your work, and good luck.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Madam President, I just wanted to let you know, Jared Schwartz, who was going to speak, had to leave, but he told me that he wanted to get in touch soon with everyone on the board and on the council.
Okay, okay. Mr. House?
Yes, I mean, it was a phenomenal report today. I mean, it was just great to have this meeting bring forward such a comprehensive report, which I think we have, we appreciated the one we had at city council, but this even goes further, and I really am grateful for that, I think we all are. This program that was just mentioned a moment ago is an example of one of, and it's really, really, I mean, a great program, but it's one of many, many, many. And as you said, we're a resource-rich community, and I continue to see the beginnings of some collaboration here, but more than that, the coordination that we talked about at our previous meetings. You know, but still, it turns out that there are, if you would, there are people that will come up to me and say, and we read about it sometimes, in some of the things that are out there in the media, that nothing really is being done. You know, why doesn't the city just solve it? Or, it's the, it's the, it's the school district's fault, this thing happens 'cause they dropped the ball, or whatever. You know, it's really kind of lame, when you really think about it, when you really consider how much is going on. And honestly, first of my two things, I'll be very brief, but the first one is, how in the world, and I think it is important, how in the world do we get the word out to the community at large? Now, today, obviously, is one good example. This will get rebroadcast, people will get a chance to see it. How do we get, how do we get our community to kind of rally like we are, like we're talking about here, and have them kind of get the spirit, as many of these organizations do, as our police department does, our Parks and Recreation, the school districts, and all these nonprofits that are working on this stuff, the faith community, I mean, okay, but there's this kind of a strange perception. And I have people coming, and they do ask me, that it's just nothing is happening. So, that's the first thing. I would like to hear a little bit about our way of, marketing is crass, I don't mean it like that, communicating with the community at large and engaging them in this. And the second thing, and then I'll see who wants to answer, the second thing has to do with something that's coming right up on us a little bit. Remember how we had that minimum day? And who in the world would think good intentions of giving teachers a chance to prepare, and do the kind of work they need to do, letting kids out a little early, would've opened up an opportunity for such a tragedy, you know? And now we've made adjustments, and we're working on that. Good intentions can sometimes lead to bad outcomes, it just can happen. There are groups that we're working with and we know about. Then again, just the other day, we found out, we're learning that there's a new group that's begun to form, and they're working with veteran gang members, who are now back from being incarcerated or whatever, and beginning to put them into a position of being either kind of a mentor, or providing them direct contact with young people who might be, we would call, at risk. And this weekend, and next weekend, and the weekend after, I believe they've now, they've scheduled to have gang truce days in the parks, Bonnet Park in Ortega, and another place too, I can't remember where. And that's kind of a wild card. You know, that's one that we didn't anticipate, kind of came on just in the past couple of days, the city just found out about it. So, how do we prepare for that kind of a thing? And what, how do we respond to that? 'Cause I can imagine we could have that kind of thing. It could be a very positive and good thing, then again, you know, good intentions, maybe not well-coordinated with the different agencies. How do we rise to that challenge? Those are the two things. Community outreach, and getting the word out, and secondly, how do we respond to these unexpected kind of things, that just sort of pop up out of the blue?
First of all, in terms of, in terms of today's meeting, of course, the city will show this, we will show this in our time slot as well, so it'll get double coverage. Jim Armstrong and I were just talking about doing a joint press release, so that we'd get more of the word out.
And we'll put out that out early next week. And then also, in terms of coordinating these various activities, you know, we have to do it one step at a time, and work with the sponsors. In some cases, we have given them advice that they've either chose to follow, and sometimes they choose not to follow, and of course, they're independent groups. And so, I think, you know, foremost for us is security and safety issues, and we will definitely be paying attention to that, and trying to do, be as positive as we can with these groups. But like I said, in some cases, we've given them advice, and they have chosen not to follow it, and so we just have to do the best we can.
Well, I think a practical response that I have, and I raised this issue before, for how do we get this information out? The meet, for example, the meeting today, we have a lot of people who are involved in the organizations here, but we don't have a lot of members of the general public. I'm not sure we have any members of the general public. But I think if we really want to reach the general public, we have to, first of all, not hold our meetings in the halls of bureaucracy. We have to go, like Chief Sanchez mentioned, about taking the briefings out into the community, we have to take our meetings out into the community. We have, I think we have to go to where the community is, rather than continuing to expect them to show up, when we have years and years and years of evidence that they don't. And I think we can, you know, there's always logistical problems, I don't know, space, acoustics, whatever we want to, you know, whatever issues we might be able to find. But I think if we're sincere about wanting to get the public connected to this, we have to go to the public. And we have, the second part is, we have to not hold the meetings at 1:30 in the afternoon, because the public can't be here.
Can I answer the outreach question for you? In terms of the police department, Lorenzo Duarte is our new public information officer, and we also added a, that's my phone, just ignore it. We've also added another duty to him, he's also the community outreach liaison. And on a weekly basis, he's doing programs in English and Spanish, radio, television, and the media. And over the last three weeks, he's gone on Univision at least a half a dozen times to talk about PAL, to talk about gangs, the nonsense of gangs, what the police department is going to do in terms of enforcement, and asking parents to be aware that we are not going to apologize for enforcing the law, and if their kids are involved in gangs, to call these numbers. And the numbers have been called, and parents are calling about PAL, and about Parks and Rec, and it all has to do with Lorenzo's great job of getting out on a weekly basis to the Spanish-speaking media, as well as English, and sharing the programs that we briefly shared with you tonight. And he is just somewhat overwhelmed because of the calls coming in, but it just means it's working. So, as far as our programs are concerned, that's what he's doing, along with sharing on Spanish radio and TV what Nancy's doing. So, that's the outreach the PD's doing on that stuff.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember House's comments about the public. Public perception is based on what they see and hear. And these programs that we've been discussing here today, many of them, very, very good programs, many of them also have been around for a while. And the clear perception is that gang activity and gang violence has increased radically recently, and the public is right about that. So, it's not that nothing is being done, it's that the movement to do new things about this is relatively recent. The public, the public is perfectly aware of what's going on. And, you know, as the chief mentioned, the people who are living at the heart of these problems on the east side and the west side, they have a very, very unpleasant, to put it mildly, daily experience. So, it's really not surprising that people feel that kind of frustration and express it that way, I think.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone for the presentation. I just want to echo how important it is for us to be proactive in getting the message out. I think, overall, people want to do the right thing, they want to have the ability to reach out to organizations or programs, or whatever it is, but it's up to us to make those connections. And so, all the things the chief was mentioning, and Nancy and others, is very important and on our end, to be proactive and speak out in every which way we can about what's going on. I want to just reemphasize what I said earlier about, we're headed up with a challenge here of seeing all this great activity, and yet, both of our institutions are going to have a very significant budget process, in terms of how do we get those priorities together? And to think about two things. One, again, how one particular budget, whether it's the city or the school district, impacts the other with the decisions that we're making. And two, to think about what crises, what the cost of a crisis that could happen if, when we look to cut other programs that are preventative in nature. Because if we don't spend some money in the preventive side, or the intervention side, we are going to spend it on the enforcement side, and that's always more expensive, and more costly, and more tragic. more costly, and more tragic, and not as productive. So, so I think as we move into that next few months, that's going to be extremely important to keep that communication line going between the two agencies. I mean, I think it's obvious, we know from experience, that if we keep throwing money and new money at programs without the coordination, we're not going to actually interact with the very kids we need to reach. And so to find a way that we can stretch our dollars, coordinate our programs, to be, and be more results-oriented, not just saying, how many days were you open? How many kids did you reach? What was the end of the product? What was, what happened by the end of the program? How are we addressing those needs? The perfect example is the junior high after-school programs of seeing declining enrollment, of saying, well, maybe the types of programs we need to provide have to match what the interests are. It sounds kind of obvious, but you have to go through that process to make that happen, so being results-oriented. And then finally, finding some form of sustainable funding that is immune from the cyclical budget nature of public government agencies. Whether that's through, quoting from Mohamed Yunis that we heard a few months ago, a social business model, you know, where you have a business oriented that instead of the stakeholders look at how many people they're serving, not how much money they're making, and the money goes back into the organization. Dawn Riders, that we just heard, right at Public Comment, great example of something like that. And also, the partnerships we have with the social service agencies and the nonprofits, because having, the school districts have the facilities and a lot of land and space. We have a Parks and Rec program that have excellent programs and good coordinations with a lot of other agencies in the community. Bringing in outside agencies that might be more cost-effective in some way also brings in new funding resources, such as foundations who do not fund cities and do not fund school districts, but will fund a nonprofit organization that happens to be coordinating with the city and the school district. And in fact, from the work I've been doing in various ways dealing with foundations, they're looking to that more and more about not just keep on funding the same old thing year in, year out with one organization, but that collaborative effort and stretching those dollars. So to try to keep all that in mind as we move forward to the next few months, I think is essential, to make sure that we mean what we say and say what we mean when we say the violence is just unacceptable and will not be tolerated. Thanks.
Well, we're very much over time, and I know, we'd like to have a longer conversation, but I'm going to end it with Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I'm going to be real short. I wasn't going to say anything until Mr. Francisco spoke, and I think it's really important to indicate, I vehemently disagree with you, that there is not a tremendous amount of misinformation out there. There is a perception in the community, not just that gang violence has arisen, but that violence as a overall totality has, and when in fact, the case is absolutely the opposite, that you are more safe, the average person, unless they are, you know, between certain ages and demographics, is more safe than they were in this community than three years ago. And I think that's really important to remind people, that we need to be helping the youth. This isn't as much a situation where people in the community in general should be feeling unsafe, but where we need to target those youth and make sure that they are safe. And I think this perception exists, and this perception that Mr. House indicated about, you know, that the city or the school district isn't doing something. It exists because some people are very consciously repeating over and over again mistruths in this community about what is being done and these efforts. And that has got to stop. This should not be a political wedge issue, this should be something that we are trying to work on together to solve a very, very important malaise in our society, and anything less is sort of really doing those kids a disservice.
Thank you. I'd love to have a longer discussion here, another time.
Madam, I would like to, I know you want to do this, but I would, I didn't interrupt earlier. I really want to express my appreciation for the quality of the reports that we've received. Chief Sanchez's report was illuminating, and I think, I think the public wants to hear that report. We haven't heard that report, the school board has been invaluable, and Mr. Rapp's report was very informative. Mr. Armstrong's report was very informative. I really appreciate that, and I know that the community, if they watch this, are going to share that sentiment. Thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you for saying that. Additional matters for placement on a future agenda? Perhaps this again?
An update.
An update. Anything else? Anyone else?
I have one, a small one, but maybe not small for some, and it's, I know our bookmobile is something that's become a little bit of a problem in the sense that it's, participation in it has gone down over the past few years, but for a variety of reasons. And there's been some difficulty in having it interface well with the schools where it shows up, perhaps to the point where teachers haven't felt comfortable sending the kids out to it, having to do who knows what with a mismatch between their requirement to do certain things in a classroom, and where we're providing an opportunity. There's some coordination or something there that's not happening well, and I'm concerned about it. Then again, maybe it's, maybe it's, time is gone, and it's not something that will be viable. But I, but I would really, it will require some coordination if it is to flourish again and provide the service it was intended to provide. And I would really like, at some point, perhaps our staffs to do a little homework and noodle over that, and perhaps bring it back to us as a joint group for the future.
Okay. Just later.
One other item, having to do with library services. I don't think we've ever really had a discussion about the school library system and the city library system, if there's any partnerships that could arise, because both are obviously short of funds whenever we need it, and if there's a way that we can coordinate better on that.
Excellent. Nothing else? Okay, well, let's adjourn the joint meeting. We have a fifteen-minute recess for